We are. Good morning, everyone. It is April 18th, 2022. It is 6:33 PM and we have our study session. First up, there's reports from city councils. For myself, I had meetings with Northwest mayors and commissioners last week. The big talk was with all of the RACE grants that went in. We also know we have two Northwest corridor representatives on the new rail board that's being put together to look at rail from Fort Collins to wherever it's going and hoping that it takes on the Northwest corridor fast tracks that we didn't get. So that was good news and that was, that was the big news. And we have some meetings coming up with VNSF and others looking at how we can all coexist. So more of that going. Anyone else? I'll start with Mr. Baker, Councilor Baker. Do you have anything?
Right. We're going to have a Dr. Cog meeting coming up. And so if we want to address that now, or if we want to put that decision about what voice Westminster wants to speak on Dr. Cog. Because I don't think we've really asked our representative, they've not given them any directions or instructions about what we want to say on Dr. Cog.
And, okay, so let, remind me to come back to that.
You're right.
Uh, no, short week last week, so I appreciate my colleagues excusing me from Monday's meeting.
Um, I had an inclusivity board and they have some quick bullets of what they shared. Um, they talked about a group called Inclusive Journeys that does an inclusive guide for businesses. They equated it to like an inclusive Yelp that gives like a guide online about how inclusive businesses are. So they were looking to talk with that group. Um, they were working on a presentation to bring back to council about safe and welcoming program that they'd like to bring back to us in June. Um, they continue to look at and be concerned with food access in the historic southern part of the city. They didn't have any update on that. That's one of their committees that they're working on. They have been working on, they have a subcommittee on land acknowledgements that they're talking about. And that's something they would, at some point, potentially bring back to us. There was no real movement on that. And then they continued to look at their ambassadors program and doing outreach. And so they talked about potentially reaching out to the Mon community. And so I had, and I've mentioned this to you, I had told them I thought it would be wise for them to speak to you because they mentioned my connections to that community, which really I got for you. And I said, if you really want to get connections, you should probably talk to the mayor, not me. I certainly am happy to connect them with the folks I do know, but I know that you have much longer standing ties with the Mon community. And I have encouraged that if they're going to, you know, talk about the inclusive realm. And they've talked about the Mon before, that that's a community that is very engaged and wants to be a part. So, and I know it's a bigger portion of our community, so.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, with the study sessions, I know we're in here, but the doors are closed just during our open study sessions. And I had some community members, one, they weren't able to get in because the doors were actually locked, but it was just during our regular study session, not an exact session. So I want to make sure, I mean, it'd be nice if we could have the doors open. Um, so just.
We're working on the ADA enhancements. That's part of our problem right now. We have a very bad echo. If there is a sign on the door saying, please come in, apologize if there was a problem before.
Yeah, maybe they can be encouraged to knock if it's during study session if we don't hear them. Okay. And then I don't know, I just noticed while I was driving around, um, just in, you know, as I drive through the city, I've noticed a lot of benches missing at our bus stops. We used to have benches at most of our bus stops, like along Federal, and I've just noticed they haven't been replaced. And I've just tonight saw people sitting around, sitting on the ground where I know we used to have a bench. So it would be nice to be able to replace those.
Interesting.
It's usually a private company. RTV doesn't put in benches anywhere.
But we did.
Right. So it would be contracted by the city. And if there's not enough ADA space, you can't have a bench. So there's, if it impedes any kind of access for boarding or deboarding, then you can't, it impedes access.
Oh, yeah, grants, we did those back when. I got someone 112 when I was on that committee. Councilor Zadi?
So on April 20th, I have my first human services board meeting. So very excited about that. It's this Wednesday. Um, and I have a special request to counsel. I would, so I've been thinking about this and trying to plan in my head, but I'm not sure how to go about it, but I would like to start door knocking. It's the face contacting different neighborhoods. We could pick a different neighborhood. I would love it if one or more of you can join me and collaborate on the form itself. So a response form, so just some questions, some simple questions to ask them at the doors. How's it going? What, how can we help? Are there resources they're looking for that we can connect you to? And then we just start doing this on an ongoing basis. Um, that's just something that's been on my mind and curious if anyone here would like to join me and collaborate on this form that we can be armed with when we go to the doors.
And Mayor, I need to add on. Uh, I went to both 72nd and Bradford, okay, where there's been camping there for three weeks. Okay. And nothing seems to have been done at all. So I'm, I would like to know what we're doing. Okay. I also went to the one gentleman, I think his name is Eglon or something like that, who talked about the people camping at 76 and Wolf near the railroad tracks. And the oddest thing, I mean, I just picked the time to go. It was around noon. And I walked and I parked in Wolf Run Park and I walked up and quickly found the path. And when I came upon a man lying on the ground and these three ladies with him, and I asked them, do they need 911? What's going on? And they said, no, everything is fine. And, and as I was walking back, I noticed we had six firemen tromping across the street because they had parked on the west side of the creek there. They were crossing the creek and going to it. So, uh, I don't think anything has been done about the camping at 78th and Wolf, the railroad tracks there. And I know both of these have been going on for at least three weeks. And I think we owe the people who live next door to these places the same kind of response time that we gave to the people at Sheridan and 73rd or Fort, whatever it was.
Jody, do you have those?
Yes.
Ideas to follow up?
Yeah, I do. And I would, may I make a note on, on our work on homelessness? Appreciate the input. And every time we, we get information like this, it's very helpful. Um, we do, we are interviewing now for the second navigator position. Um, in reference to the first neighborhood, the, the big concerted response at this, in the Spanish Oaks neighborhood, that our current navigator is still working with five of those individuals on housing. And so it doesn't go, it does, they don't go, it doesn't get completely resolved when the physical situation's resolved. That otherwise it can reseed or restart. So just wanted to let you know that it's kind, it stacks each site. Um, they are working on the, on the second big site, which is the one behind the land graph planning site. They have been working with the individuals involved and, and staff did do a large debris cleanup there within the past day or so. So that, that's now progressing along the same curve as the first big response in a neighborhood. But anytime we get information, it does allow the navigator to get out and start working with individuals first. Um, so that, so that then we can continue with the, with the continuum of, of effort and action. So we will definitely make note of your observations, Councilor, and make sure that we get out there and, and have a look at those.
Right. Because they're obviously taking the, well, the buggies from grocery stores.
I have a little updates on this.
Oh, for sure.
So the, the location of 76th and Wolf, that is actually the area that the police, our homeless navigator is working on with our park staff. We are part of the component that we're looking to do is actually add a gate to help prohibit folks the ease of access to drive into that areas. That's one of the things we're working on. There's a variety of other components in process. Um, as, as it relates to 72nd and Bradburn, that area as well, our staff is working to, I think, I'm not sure if it was today, apologize, Thomas is not here. Um, that they did get the cleaning crew to get out there at least to start the process. But again, it is a phased approach and working with the navigator. The navigator does have quite a few components on her plate. And so she's trying to make sure that she's working through that continuum of care and working to help get those individuals the resources and support they need in moving them along. But of course, it takes time, which is part of our biggest challenge with, especially with one staff person right now as a navigator, trying to navigate all of those challenges and with those individuals. But they are aware of it and they are working with those areas. I'm, I'm sorry, it's not as far along as we would like it to be, but we are certainly working in those areas.
Are we doing like the signs? Because isn't that one of the things we asked for?
Yes, they are working on that. I don't know if they've got signs to these locations just yet.
Okay. Now, do we have any kind of expected date when they will be gone?
No, sir. I do not have that.
Is there some way we can, uh, set a timeline?
That, I, I need to go back with the staff and find out where we are in that process.
Because I think it'd be really helpful if we could set reasonable expectations for will the neighbors.
Absolutely. One of our challenges is the sheer number of sites that we have around the city that they're trying to work through and the volume. And again, right now, we have one person who is the lead and we're reaching out to those individuals. And that's quite challenging, building the time and the rapport.
And do we have any idea who these ladies around town are?
That I don't know anything about.
Just a, just follow up on that, if I may, Mayor, too, because this all kind of goes into the integrated holistic approach that we've talked about, putting together a process. And I think, um, because of the number of sites, if we don't have, and, and I think we've talked about this over and over again, but we have to have a process in place that's realistically acceptable and defensible in court. We have to have that before we just go start tossing people off. And I, we've had this discussion. And, and I, and, and yes, would we like to, I mean, from a, from a pure standpoint, would we like all these sites gone tomorrow? I say yes. Is that something that's defensible for the city? And if we don't have a process in place, so we have to put the process in place first that we talk about that contact, options, help, trespass, move. And when we get to the trespass and move part, we have to have the integration on that is, okay, if they're still there and we have to trespass them, what do we do with their stuff? Because we have the legal obligation to store that. Where are we going to store it?
Didn't we have a meeting back in March that set this out?
But we don't have the process in place. We can't just snap our fingers, Councilor, and say, we want this done tomorrow.
Wasn't that the point of the meeting in March was to, was to define that process?
Absolutely. And that's what staff is working on. And that was been my understanding that they've been a couple memos that have come back to us. Excuse my shortness this evening. I apologize.
That's fine.
But I think we've, we've discussed this too, is that we're, we're going to put something that's legally defensible also.
Well, then maybe a better question of mine is, when, what's the timeline for the process to be completed?
I agree with that as well.
Yeah, the protocol is generally complete for internal. What we are trying to do is put in place the version that is to share with city council and to the public. But we are, we are doing our final confirmation. We are making sure that PRL, particularly their component, through the division managers today. I haven't had a chance to touch base with them to find out whether we've got the final blessing, but I believe our internal process is complete. And that's actually what we've been using with these sites to date. But again, it takes time and one navigator with, you know, we've got 17 sites. Uh, we've got five just from the site that we dealt with in the Spanish Oaks area that we're still working with. That take time to get them to move into temporary housing and then to try to help find them the permanent roundhouse.
We have 17 identified separate sites.
That's my understanding, yes.
Possible multiple individuals at each site.
Yes. And signs are up at the Spanish Oak site. Um, I'm reading some notes here. A key issue is having a housing option. And that's one of our biggest challenges is right now we have primarily one hotel that we can put folks in or that is willing to take folks, but they only have so many spaces and they don't accept everyone.
Okay, like in the Regis site, isn't active anymore?
That I'm not aware of.
You know, Rich?
No, they're getting, I think they were going to shut it down.
Because, I mean, it was only half full.
Yeah, yeah. That was my understanding, someone that's there.
We only have 10 spaces available at the hotel that's been working with us.
Okay. And so we'll have this formal process presented to council next week?
Uh, is planning to come in your packet for the May 2nd council meeting as an info-only staff report at that point, and then looking to report back to council with a further conversation on, um, faith-based options and things of that nature at the May 9. I'm looking to Cody to make sure I've got the dates right because we were just chatting about this morning. I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
I'm just curious on that because I know that when this came up, I remember his last week, but there was mention that one of these camps, I think the one that, that the mayor and I visited, that handful of those folks weren't allowed back. So I was thinking about that quite a bit because one of the concerns, I suppose, is are they not allowed back due to one of the stays that we helped them get? Because I would be curious, like, is there any kind of follow through with that? If we're partnering with that hotel and there's folks that we're sending to them, do we hear back that those, those folks are no longer allowed if there's, uh, interaction?
I apologize.
That's fine. Probably something to follow up, but if we're, we're going to work on the process, I think we should understand the whole cycle of the process.
Thank you, Zadi.
Just want to circle back to the question I asked, if anyone's interested in the door knocking.
I'm interested.
I'm, I'm kind of trying to understand what you're trying to accomplish, honestly, because you started with the human services board. Human services board has people who apply that are nonprofits. So were you just sharing those two things separately or was there a correlation?
Two separate topics. One is the first human services board meeting is on Wednesday. Second, completely different topic is I would like to start door knocking. Um, the purpose with that would be citizen engagement, just seeing council more often, hearing from the ground what's happening, um, bringing it back and amplifying whatever their issues are. I think it's a good thing to be out in the community as often as we can and not just staff, but us. They want, they want to see us. So that's why I'm going to start doing this.
I guess I need more context. I feel like for, for me, you know, in the four years that I've been doing this, I've been out in the community in a variety of ways. So I'm not sure that, I'm not sure. I, I had to think about it as far as like what.
That's all right.
To accomplish. But if anyone is, is interested, let me know. And then collaborating too on this form, on the response one.
Yeah. Um, so yes, definitely interested in that. And just one thing further would be kind of in reference to one of the metrics and performance measures that was identified in our strategic plan. Um, if there's a way to integrate council into some of our HOA or neighborhood group outreaches, because we have, you know, like town halls are one thing, but I'd love for some other opportunities and maybe a little more geographically focused to, to talk to people. So whether it's door knocking or, you know, interacting at HOA meetings or however we might, you know, the communications team might organize those interactions. I'd love to see if we can be a part of them to the extent possible. So that's just that one. And then the other, the other question I had was just a follow up to the, the, uh, interactions that we have with people experiencing homelessness. Do, do we only have one option with taking them to the hotel? I mean, don't we have partnerships with Jefferson County and Adams County to, are there other like SRO or other kinds of bases that are available, maybe outside of Westminster?
Um, my understanding is that at least right now that we don't have those capacities. A lot of the shelters did shut down during COVID and have been slow to reopen. And so that's one of the challenges we're, we're confronting.
That the counties are not providing services?
I can't speak to that portion of it. I can speak to what housing options we have available in the city.
So we don't know what our options are for the county?
I don't personally have all that list. I know that our, our homeless team does have that information. And they do try to navigate them with that group, but a lot of people homeless have an area that they want to stay in. Um, we can get section eight vouchers, but we can't find landlords necessarily willing to rent them. Sorry, because I got an update right there. So that's one of the challenges we run into as well. Okay, thank you.
Um, speaking of obligations of council, um, I've been on the Rocky Mountain Airport Roundtable just for a couple months. Um, I would like to ask my colleagues if somebody else could take that. My load is, is too much and I'm not really able to make those meetings all the time, really rarely anymore because my job, job has gotten too busy and they're always during the day. Um, and so I'm concerned at some point it's going to always be fallen to whoever the alternate is. And I don't know if that's a good fit for you to be able to do that. Um, so rather than starting to drop the ball on it, I thought I would ask my colleagues if anybody would be willing to do that. They do it once a month. I think it's usually from like nine to 11 on Mondays.
Bad day.
Yeah, it's a, it's a rough, rough day to make.
Rough day.
Okay. We'll have everybody think about it and get ahold of David if you're interested. Back to Dr. Cog. Um, Jody, do we have staff that looks at when that agenda comes out, does staff look at it and give input to the, um, to our, to our representative and alternate so they know what, how, how it affects us and especially things that are controversial? so they know what, how, how it affects us and especially things that are controversial? I know sometimes they offer amendments or just say, nope, this vote no or whatever. Um, is that going to both the alternate, alternate and the, um, representative?
When we're going to meeting?
I will want to confirm that, Mayor. That's a really good question. We should be making sure of that.
Because if she calls in at the last minute and can't go, our alternate wouldn't have seen anything. I think that will help some, because as long as they get that, then they're able to ask questions, um, to staff so they know exactly where they're at. And I'm making a huge assumption that staff is going on what our strategic plan is, what this council's thinking, blah, 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 blah. So it should be in congruence with where we're at.
I can confirm that I am getting those emails from staff, but I don't think.
Yeah, and you should, because, um, and, and you're welcome to go to any and all of them. Um, that's how I learned when Mayor Moss was, um, he just said, I was the alternate and he said, well, just come along, because then you'll see how it all works. And when he wasn't able to go, I knew people, so it didn't feel weird going.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for that, because that was a great lead into that question as far as, you know, we have a, we have our strategic plan as kind of our, our roadmap, but thinking along the idea of with Dr. Cog, if something was coming before, if we could get that as a council and if it's a, a big thing that we could take, you know, a position paper on, so that we could have direction on that, on individual items. I think it's kind of broad to be able to do the whole thing, other than the foundation of our strategic plan. But to have that positional type papers would be, I think, helpful. Plus, it would link us all into the discussion then, too. So I'd be in favor of that. One more email, but.
Anything else for the good of the order? We have reason for executive session?
Do, thank you, Mayor. The proposed executive session is to discuss strategy and progress on negotiations with Aggregate Industries for a license agreement on the Wattenberg Red War property pursuant to CRS 2464024E1 and Westminster's Code 1113C7.
Um, and Jody, I didn't forget you, but I know they're waiting to do this executive session, but do you as soon as we get done with this? Sorry. Um, we have reason for executive session and I'm going to go around the room, poll you and ask if you're okay with going an executive session and that you'll keep it confidential. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Simons?
Yes.
Counselor Emmett?
Yes.
Mayor McNally, yes. Counselor, or Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Counselor, Mayor Mel?
Yes.
Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
Jody Andrews, yes.
Barbara Opie, yes. You need all the people that shouldn't be here and the ones that are need to state their name and say the same thing.
Do you want that on this reporting? And then we'll do it again on the executive reporting.
Um, since we've already begun, I think.
Can we mark the record?
Edit that, that's right.
We're working on that. We need the equipment, it's not coming yet.
I'm a container ship.
Supply chain, messing everything up.
Dang ocean.
Frustrating.
Okay, it is 7:39 and study session is back in session as a regular session publicly. And we didn't finish the city manager's report, so Judy?
Oh, thank you. I really just want to draw attention to our two presentations tonight. One is, the first one up is presentation of entertainment districts. And so I'll ask staff shortly to come forward for that. We're looking forward to council's feedback on that. And there will be some information provided and then you can have an opportunity to give us your direction. And the second one tonight is the city council strategic plan workshop to review proposed performance measures. The primary output tonight, we hope, is that you will give us direction on the objectives. We really want to land those and move forward on those. The performance measures, probably not as far along as we'd hoped for this evening. So what we would do is ask and welcome your input and feedback tonight. And then staff will take those with the consulting team and work those into a final for you. So if you see that they did a bit of work from your perspective, please give us that input tonight. We will take that and retool those and bring it back in a more completed fashion for you next session. Thank you.
No questions? All right, first up is presentation of entertainment districts. Common consumption areas within the city of Westminster. All I can say from all of the people when I go visit the orchard, which I was there today, they say it's about time.
Very good.
Ready, Lindsay?
We are.
Okay, great. So we have two staff presenting tonight. Mayor Lindsay Kimball, our economic development director, and Ron Arguello of our city attorney's office.
Great, thank you. All right, good evening, mayor. Mayor Protem and counselors, I'm Lindsay Kimball, your economic development director. We're here tonight to share with you information about entertainment districts and their corresponding common consumption areas. And how they're a benefit to not only the residents, but our businesses in our community. Before I get started, I just want to thank, there's many, many departments who have worked on this with us. That have been integral, there's been private sector partners. We have representatives from the orchard here tonight with us. I know, they're very excited. But I also want to make sure that I thank and don't forget anybody. So if you would indulge me, but I'd like to thank staff of economic development department, the city attorney's office, the city clerk's office, fire, police, community development, HR, parks and rec, innovation communications. And as I said, our private sector partners, who are just really very important to this effort. So I just want to thank them. All right, so we want to start tonight by discussing what an entertainment district is and how it's related to those common consumption areas that we mentioned. Then I'm going to turn it over to Ron Argüello with the city attorney's office, who's going to walk you through the city's processes, procedures for creation of the district. How are the events approved? How do we monitor those events? And how might you add additional entertainment districts in the future? Then we'll come back to me and we're going to discuss how these areas are beneficial to the city, beneficial to local business owners and how they're going to contribute to building a sense of community. Finally, we're going to show you the locations of the first two districts that we're proposing for the city of Westminster and discuss the process for creation of additional districts in the future. Next slide, please. All right, so what is an entertainment district? Well, it's a creature created by the state legislature in 2011. Their purpose is to be a community gathering place for cultural events, concerts, activities, food festivals, both big and small. The entertainment districts have certain parameters, so they can't be larger than 100 acres. You must contain at least two 20,000 square foot premises that are already licensed to serve alcohol. So you have to have existing businesses within the district. And within the entertainment districts themselves is where you can designate common consumption areas. So the two concepts work together. You have a larger entertainment district and then you can have a common consumption area within that district. Doesn't have to be coterminous with the entertainment district, but it must be within the entertainment district. And these are areas, of course, where patrons over the age of 21 can enjoy alcoholic beverages in a common secured area that are serviced by those existing establishments with liquor licenses within the districts. Each entertainment district also has a promotional association. That's a very important concept to this discussion. It will have a board of directors, bylaws, it's its own entity that will be created by the business owners in that district. And that's another way that the businesses have a say in what happens in these districts and what sorts of events and how they're promoted and so forth. So this clearly demonstrates there must be business support for the district. It also allows a vehicle for those businesses to work together, sometimes for the first time. To talk about what are some common goals, what kind of events do you want to see? How can we best activate this common space so that we are raising awareness of our location and also of our businesses? So primarily retailers, restaurateurs, hotels can be part of entertainment districts. So it's beneficial for all of the parties involved. The promotional association also acts as the applicant to the city for event permits and the common consumption area permits for those events. So that's also why that entity is very important, that it be established. And just wanted to let you know you're in good company. And there's many cities within Colorado who have already taken advantage of this vehicle mechanism to create the entertainment districts and the overlaying common consumption areas to help their local restaurateurs and retailers improve business. And that's just a sampling of some of those communities throughout the state. And I also, just one more thing I wanted to add on this slide, but that while crafting this, staff was very intentional and the various departments who helped us with this reached out to those communities to get bad practices, to learn from maybe some of the mistakes where they stubbed their toe, what went wrong. So just trying to learn from all of that and take that into account as we craft everything from the application to understanding the best way for those promotional associations to work and who should be on it and sort of understanding that. And then also how that interplays with the existing permitting regulation within municipality. So that, in addition, were some lessons that we learned from talking to our neighbors. So that was very educational. And overwhelmingly, I just want to share that they were very positive about the experience. And, you know, they did share some of the pitfalls, sure, nothing's perfect. So we've taken those into account as well. Now I want to turn it over to Rob.
Thank you, council. Good evening, I think everyone, I know everyone here. Ron Argüello, Dave's office here. So we'll go to the next slide. I don't want to give you the technical aspect of where we are, how this is created, what happened. So as Lindsay had explained, that this is a creature of state statutes, under the state liquor licensing code, that gives local jurisdictions the opportunity or the ability to create what's called an entertainment district. Now, we're not talking about mini Vegas here, you're not just going to walk around and carry, these are specific areas and oftentimes what you think about them is we have special event permits that people come in and apply for, Harvest Fest, events that we have, concerts, series. And they have a certain area that they barricade off and they do this and it's a one-time, one-off event. But what we're proposing is an entertainment district gives you an area where people can come in and apply to maybe do these frequently so that they don't have to come in and apply for a special event permit every single time. And we have a limit on how many special events you can do per year anyway on that. So this is areas that we think might be beneficial where a lot of licensees might come in and work together and want these type of special events on a regular basis. So we start off with the, we're proposing in chapter 23 and title 5 to create an entertainment district. The state requires that the local jurisdiction create an entertainment district with a boundary of no greater than 100 acres. And it must contain at least two licensed liquor license premises with a total aggregate of 20,000 licensed premise square feet. If you meet those conditions, you can create it and you can create as many as you want. And so it's up to this council to decide, do we want to create an entertainment district which says people can come in and apply to create these common consumption areas, create these ongoing special event areas? By creating this entertainment district, you're not making any obligations on anyone to make a common consumption area. No one has to pay any fees, no one has any extra taxes. There's no financial or rights or any kind of requirements on anyone to do anything. You can create it and it can just be on paper forever and ever. But it does open up that ability and the option for people to come forward and these businesses and licensed premises to come forward to take advantage of what the entertainment district does. And that's where we get into, the next step after it's created is then a promotional association has to be created. That is not an obligation on the city. It's not something that the city is required to do, nor does the city really get involved other than what we have proposed in the code and the ordinance would be to have a city member that is a board director on one of these promotional associations. What it is, it's a separate entity, typically a nonprofit organization that's created as an entity of the state or under the state, under state regulations, not a part of the state. And they create a board of directors, they create, they attain their own insurance for the licensing, for the, all the licenses, for any kind of property damage, civil liability. They have their own insurance, separate from what a separate licensee would have. They have dues if they decide to have dues because this insurance is probably going to have to be split somehow. They have certain rules, regulation, their own bylaws, they're separate. They create that. And once they create that, then they come forward with their bylaws, with their lease, if they need to have a lease for the areas they want to have or their ownership or permission or licenses to use this area. And they come forward and that promotional association can create an application with the city. And the city clerk's office has created an application, they're still fine tuning it, but they're creating an application, just like you would have with a special event permit or with any liquor license application. And what they're doing is they're creating this, they're showing that they have all the checks that they need to have. They're showing that they're going to meet with PD, they're going to meet with public works, they're going to meet with CD, they're going to meet with fire, with building inspectors and everything, everyone that they might need to make sure that this is a safe way to handle this, that the city is on board with the way that they're going to create this. It's not just encompassing everything. And as you'll see from the map, some of this entertainment district covers, to be contiguous, it covers Harland Street. And we know that we're not going to want to just shut down Harland Street and we're not going to do that. So they're working with everyone to make sure, here are your limitations that the city is going to put on you. And they apply and then that goes to the special permit and license board. So what they do is they apply one to be recognized as a certified promotional association and typically in conjunction, but they don't have to. They apply for a common consumption area that says, okay, here's the organization, we have all of our checks in place, we've done everything and we want to create this common consumption area. This is what we're really talking about that's similar to the special event permit. Common consumption area has to be within that entertainment district boundary. It has to, it can only include licensed premises within that entertainment district boundary. But that premises doesn't have to be right next to where the common consumption area. They can create a stand somewhere where they're serving out of kegs or a mobile bar that they set up and they can still be a part of that. But they say, here's where we want to have this common consumption area. Let's say it's on the plaza, the central plaza in downtown Denver, or sorry, downtown Westminster, excuse me. And that's where they want to rope off, they want to make physical barriers. Well, the police department is going to be involved with looking at what physical barriers they have. They're going to have a safety plan, they're going to have their security, just like they would with any special event permit. But it's going to be an ongoing. Every time we do a common consumption area that we're applying for, it's going to follow these specific rules we are laying out that says, here's what our physical barriers are, here's what our security is, here are our planned event dates that we're going to have. And they're going to give that all to the SPLB. The time that this is going to be, so if common consumption, they could say, we're going to limit this, it's only going to be from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And that's what they're going to have as a limitation. Or they might say, we want to have it anytime we want. But SPLB will ultimately determine those kinds of things.
Two questions. One, with the entertainment district, in the ordinance, aren't we allowed to state like how often and time? So we could do that and then the common consumption group would kind of refine it to be within that, but potentially narrower?
Correct. Yeah, and I'm going to, before I get off this slide, I'm going to kind of explain what council is really responsible for. But I can go into that now because we're pretty much, so the next part was SPLB is going to be reviewing this.
All right, just real quick, sorry. Just on the common consumption group, is it still 20,000 square feet of licensed premises that you said to comprise that group?
No, no, that's just what's required to create the entertainment district. So you can't, you have to have 20,000 of licensed premises within the district when you create the entertainment district. The promotional association common consumption area can be two smaller places that do that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And to go on to your point with that, the special permit license board is reviewing these applications. They have the discretion, under the state statute and the liquor license code is that the local licensing authority has the ability to approve promotional association, approve common consumption and set any limits on common consumption. Now, the SPLB operates under their authority under the code. Now, the SPLB operates under their authority under the code. And so if council wants to make sure that they are, not just give them full discretion to do everything, but they want to say, we don't want anything to be done after 9:00 PM in downtown because we have residential area down there. We don't want it to be interfering. You can put that in the code that gives them the authority only to be within the limits of what council wants them to be. And so it is important that if you have specific requirements or things that you want that to limit the discretion of what the SPLB can and can't do, that's something that would go into this entertainment district code that would limit what the, what the guidelines and parameters that the SPLB has to operate under. So that's important to note that if you, if you see something in the proposed code that you think needs to be more limited or give more discretion, that's something that needs to be done when we do this adoption of this code. Because that's your opportunity, your time to tell them what they need to do. Everything else goes to the local licensing authority. And so the only way to really oversee that would be to take it away from SPLB and do it as council. And I don't know if you really want to take on all that responsibility. I know Mayor Protem Dema kind of got out of that. I don't know if he wants to go back. It's a busy group. So that's, that goes into, so you have that common consumption area, the SPLB is going to look at it. They're going to look at the needs and desires and that's done by the same type of things that you can have for a liquor license. That can be people coming in from the community testifying, it can be interviews or petitions signed by them. It can be an actual license or, sorry, needs and desires study like we do or new licenses. It can be anything and everything that kind of gives the public the opportunity to present and show. While the promotional association would have to show that the needs and desires are there for this common consumption area and that it meets everything that the SPLB and the code requires to make sure that we're not serving underage, we're not serving overly intoxicated persons, that everything is identified by the licensee that is selling the beer. They have to have, or whatever they're selling, they have to have their name on the cups. It can't be greater than 16 ounces, making sure that they're following all that and putting any limitations they think they need to do on that.
The only people who can sell in the common consumption area are the liquor licensed organizations within the entertainment district.
Correct. And then the only ones that can actually serve after that, so that, those are the ones that are eligible. Only the ones that can actually serve in the common consumption area are those that are approved as part of the promotional association. So you might have a promotional association that comes forward that only has three of the eight licensees in the entertainment district. But only those three that are in the promotional association that have been approved by the SPLB can actually serve in that common consumption area. The other ones can be attached later on, but it's kind of like a dual purpose. Only those ones that are in the common consumption are even eligible. And then from that, whoever is in the promotional association.
And each one of those organizations who serves in a common consumption area still has to meet all the, all the requirements of their liquor license, which addresses overindulged and underage.
Correct.
So you said that people could be attached later on. Is that something that they would have to go back to the SPLB if they wanted to add additional people after the fact?
Correct. And that's part of the state, state license, the liquor licensing statute, it requires that, that they go back.
Then, Senator, on that note, I imagine that it's the same as most things, like with the state compliance that oversees all of it. So we couldn't be, like when you talk about hours of service, like it can't be more than what the state is. It has to be less, but we can be more restrictive, just not more, less restrictive.
Yep. 7:00 AM to 2, or 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM are the serving times. I think we've put in, I figured, I just didn't want anybody to get crazy and think that we can go crazy. Yeah. And so if you guys want to limit that, then you can limit that even further. You can always go more restricted, you just can't start expanding what the state said that we can do for that.
They're still the boss, everybody.
So, if you go to the next slide. Still about one, next slide, I think that's still the same one. So we talked about the public safety aspect. And so that's when the SPLB is looking at, they're looking at the public safety. And one thing that, I, I've done a training with SPLB on this already, we'll continue to do trainings, but they're really going to be looking at, this isn't a one-time event that you're looking at it. You're going to have to consider, this could happen every day if they, if they approve that or it can happen every week or something of that sort. And so you want to make sure that you're really crossing all your Ts and dotting all your Is. So they're going to be looking in the city, in the application process, looking at, what is the emergency access? Are any roads being shut down and how is fire or police going to be able to access those roads in case of emergency? Are there street closures allowed? And I think if you want to restrict street closures, that's something we put into the code that we'll never shut down Harland Street, we'll never shut down Eaton Street, those kinds of things. What security officers are going to be, say, how many security officers are you going to need per however many people you expect to have there? Are they going to be police officers, off-duty police officers that you're hiring? Or is it going to be a separate security organization that would be licensed to the city by their requirements? What kind of barriers are they going to be? Physical barriers, are there going to be caution tapes that's put up there? That can be something that if you want specific physical barriers, you can mandate that in the code as well. And SPLB would decide what was appropriate physical barrier.
And who pays for the officers or security?
It's all on the promotional association. City has no costs for this, there's nothing other than potentially having a, on the promotional association and the code that we propose is that there will be a city representative that is required to be on the board of directors for every promotional association. That way the city has say in it and if anything does happen and a vote or anything that might be detrimental to the city, that representative has a vote and can bring it back to the city to say, hey, where are we at on this? So that would be a job duty that they would have, so it would probably be their time would be the only expenditure that we would have for that.
And if we're short of officers at the time they ask, it's okay for our chief to say, we don't have officers to give for that event?
Yeah, I mean, we're not mandated to have any of our officers do it. They would have to find the alternative. And so that might be a good aspect for SPLB to, to ask questions on, to say, if the plan is we're going to hire off-duty officers, what happens when there's not enough to be able to serve that time? Or they're all over their hours or, or something of that sort? That'd be a great question for the SPLB to ask them to say, what's the next step or what's your backup plan? How are you going to be doing that and who are you going to be hiring? And how are you going to handle that on a last minute timeframe where you don't have that?
In terms of compliance checks, so I know with the businesses that are there, you, you know, when you're going to do compliance, they get the letter that goes out and says, hey, we're going to be out doing compliance checks. How would that work with a special district? Would it still be kind of, I mean, because it depends on what the events are. So is, would they still get some sort of notification that you're going to be out? Or should they just expect that any time compliance checks could happen? Have you thought through that piece of it?
I see Troy. I'm sure he has. I defer to Troy on that.
Hi, counsel, Troy Gordon, I'm a liquor enforcement officer from PD. We do send out letters. We wouldn't have to necessarily send one out to the specific association because we already send them out to every license that they're establishing. They would already be on notice. But a direction is to send it also to the, to the different boards for the associations and we certainly can do that.
Yeah, I think, to me, that it seems like it's, it meets needs, I guess, that it might just be a good reminder to the licensees who participate in this, that, you know, they get that, that warning. So it doesn't necessarily correlate the same way it does when you are going to do the compliance checks, I guess. Because you kind of have a, a little bit more of a heads up kind of with those. I, I always felt like anyway, but you know what I mean? Like it's, but I guess that's just one of those things that they, they're at least aware that that's something that we do. And I guess they probably, I mean, already are since they're licensee, but.
I, I think that they would definitely be aware that that's the case. I don't know about the, giving them a timeframe, in the next month, we will be going out and checking. But I think in the application that it's made clear that they're, both state and Westminster can do compliance checks.
It remind me, the state just kind of, they just, they're not as, as kind as the city. They just kind of show up when they show up.
Yeah. So, so we go on, last part is that, that's what you talked about, there's frequent inspection by the state and the city. And like I said, so part of the, part of the requirements under the state licensing code is that it can be no bigger than 16 ounces, that they have to have the logo and name of the licensee on the cups that are there. So you can tell if there is a violation, at least where that liquor or beer or wine or whatever it is came from at that point.
So, and that's a other question is, so then if that's who served and it's their cup, they serve. So then if there was a compliance failure, that would go back to the, that individual holder, not the whole group?
It'd likely go to both, is what you're typically, because they're, they're, they are still under the same obligations under their own license under the common consumption area. But the promotional association, the common consumption area is something that has to be renewed on an annual basis too. So we're looking at violations of the promotional association as well. And so that might be something where they decide that, hey, we're going to remove this violator from our promotional association in order to make sure that the SPLB is comfortable or city clerk, they get along to actually renew our license on that. Or we're going to hit them with a penalty or they get hit with a penalty. But I don't think that the city would ever double whammy them saying, hey, the promotional association and licensee are being in trouble. I think more so the promotional association is looking at, are you going to be renewed? Are you going to keep operating? Whereas licensee might have to serve a specific suspended days or served days for the specific violation.
Question. In the ordinance, do, well, just citywide, are we still doing net zero events or at least city run? Like Harvest Fest? Okay, back in the day, we were doing net zero waste events.
So that's a great question, counselor. We haven't had an event in so long because of COVID.
Yeah.
So we will revisit that.
I know, right? Yeah.
This year.
Yeah, it's like I, I left and then COVID happened, so everything's frozen in time. So I guess just one, one question I'd love to, or something I'd love to see in the ordinance is that we ask that these events, because I'm assuming they can create a lot of trash, that we would ask that they be net zero events like a city.
I wouldn't want to do that.
Do you like trash instead?
Yeah, I love trash.
Well, we do it at the city, so I'd love to ask other people to do it as well.
Any other questions on the public safety aspect? All right, so next slide. And so we get into our city involvement. How is the city involved in this to make sure we have some oversight? We start off with the application review and that's where the city clerk's office has created this robust application. You have to go through all the department inputs, buyer, police, CD, city clerk, PR and L. If, I, I don't think PR and L would be as involved in say the orchard because we don't have any parts of our parks there, but definitely in the downtown area. But they're going through all the proper departments to make sure everything is looked at on what they're planning on doing. And does it comply with the code? Does it comply with our safety measures? Does it comply with what we want as a city as well? And then after it goes through all those checks, that's the time where, once it's completed, then it can get scheduled for a hearing with the SPLB. Like I said, there's a, there's a city representative that's required to be on the board of directors. So there is a vote and there's also always communication back to the city on what's going on, what's planned, what changes might be coming. And then you have the SPLB approval. One thing that we have changed compared to licensing in this code section is that typically you have, once the SPLB approves a liquor license, then it is administratively renewed by the city clerk's office each year. So the city clerk gets a renewal, they say, okay, unless something has come up that police has seen or gotten a lot of complaints, they can go through an expedited administrative review without the SPLB rehearing what's been going on. And we have changed that since this is such a new concept, so many events can happen at one time with multiple people that, or multiple licensees that we've said, for the first two renewals, we are having SPLB have another public hearing to hear these because there's probably going to be two, maybe three common consumption areas between downtown and orchard that the SPLB will hear those renewals, will get updates from the city representative from the, from the police department on how many complaints maybe we've had about, you know, being too loud at too late a time or disruptions that have happened because of people coming from the common consumption area, any violations that we've had, what they, what the promotional association expects to do in the future. Maybe they see, wow, we could really expand this to every single weeknight, we can do this. And maybe that's something that they want to look at with that renewal. And so the, for the first two renewals, the SPLB will be looking at that and determining whether or not there are more restrictions they want to place based on what has been presented by the city representative, police and whatnot. Or are we just going to renew it for another year? They get another update of calendar of what's going to be expected. And if it's been two renewals and we don't feel that there's a need because it's operating seamlessly, things seem to be going well, there's not many complaints, then we allow it to be transferred to an administrative review where the city clerk does that. It's very similar to our special event permits where you can come in and if you hold the same special event, you still have to come back to the SPLB for three times. After three times, then the city clerk can renew it if it's done in the same, substantively the same location, same type of event. So we followed that process, what we do with special events and applied it to the common consumption areas as well. So there's a bit more oversight from the city to make sure that it's operating smoothly for several years before we actually kind of say, okay, let's just administratively do it. And then of course, anytime there is abundance of complaints or issues that come up, the city clerk can always refer right back to SPLB to look at it. So it's not saying after three years, you're automatically renewed, it just makes it a simpler process. But you can always be put forth back to SPLB before any kind of renewal happens. And of course, city council is always welcome to come, it's a public meeting, to come and give any input or statements that you have heard for the SPLB to consider at that time too. Or have the city representative give that kind of information as well. Any questions on our involvement?
Actually, you had mentioned like the city, and so I know the city does a lot of special events where they pull permits. And so just thinking through what the district means for people who do special permits. I imagine this doesn't keep people from doing a special event within those bounds so they could do, do the same, that doesn't change anything other than the people who actually apply to be part of the association.
Yeah. The, the only thing I could see as a conflict would be if the common consumption area, say, uses our, our central plaza area in the downtown Westminster. They already have been approved for the common consumption area, they already had an event planned for a certain date and a special event permit comes in and asks for that same date for, for that. I think that's where the SPLB would have to consider whether or not something was already planned, which part of the application is to write down all of your dates that you plan to have something. And if it's already on that planned date, they could probably look at that and be notified right away by city staff that there's already a planned event on that date. That's the only way I can see a conflict, but it doesn't keep them from saying, I want to have it in this area and the city is okay with having it in that area. It doesn't conflict with the common consumption area. We can still have it in that area just because it's the common consumption. The landowner gets to decide how they're going to use that. And if the city's the landowner, they get to decide when and how to use that outside of what's already been approved.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Do they have to, when the common consumption area is doing an event, do they sign it differently? Or like, you know, would it, so somebody has this one-off special event, you know, where we typically would have, you know, the common consumption area events? And would there be any confusion if something goes awry with that special event? And then, I don't know, I guess it might just be the hazard of having multiple parties run events that.
Yeah, and I, I would think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if there were complaints about an event, we could easily see, you know, who, who did it, who was responsible for it, who got the permit? And then we would be able to identify, was that the common consumption area, the promotional association? Or was it something else not related to that and then hold them accountable?
It, it's not in the code to require special signage. If that's something that you want to have in there or added, that's something that you would need to consider with this. But I think it would be easily distinguishable as the police would, the police would already know and city clerk would already know, what are the dates that they have listed in their application? And also, an application comes in for a special event, you know the date and location for that. And then you would also have the distinction that I doubt that any special event is going to have 16-ounce cups with the name and label of the place printed on it. So you might be able to easily tell between that as well. printed on it. So you might be able to easily tell between that as well. So I think there's enough safeguards to say, we would at least not want to violate. Now, the public, I don't know if they would know or be able to distinguish the two, other than maybe there's some signage for a special event, and those that happen.
A cool question to stem off that is, if someone violates it, what are the repercussions?
Someone violates the liquor laws?
Yeah, like if something goes awry, something happens.
So both the licensee and the promotional association can be held responsible for that. The licensee, the promotional association, we likely wouldn't have any kind of, you're suspended for six days from holding common consumption areas. But they would be something that would be logged in to say, you know, if it's a serious enough thing, it might come before the SPLB to determine whether or not the promotional association, the common consumption area is revoked at that time if it's serious enough. But we'll probably, if we don't have serious, but it's maybe serving an underage, which is still serious, but not, something you'd likely revoke the whole promotional association. That might be something that's logged in and looked at on a renewal that happens. And then the licensee that is found in violation can be looked at with SPLB. They can go for a hearing on the particular violation because they still have to follow all those same things. So their license, that particular licensee might be suspended or given a warning or whatever, wherever they're at in the process of how many violations they've had in the past, they'd be looked at as if it happened on the premises as well.
The city would be insured, right? That's part of the requirement?
Part of the requirement is minimum insurance requirements that are listed on there. I think it's our standard 1 million, 2 million aggregate, and that they have to show proof of that, and they have to provide that. And I think though, I have to double check, but I think usually we have that the city's added as an additional insured in that requirement in that policy. And I'm pretty positive that we'll put that on there.
That protects us from the liability, if any.
Yep. Anything else?
We also think RISK is another department that assisted in the development of this. I think we had some consultation with RISK regarding the insurance questions.
All right, next slide.
All right, and back to me. Just wanted to show you some examples of how we've activated public spaces. You have the Orchard concert series there, Great Gathering, also the Latino Festival in the Westminster Station area, Great Gathering. And just wanted to give some more visual examples of what we're thinking about when we say an entertainment district. So we want these to be places that naturally pull our residents and help build that sense of community. And also, you know, it's a mechanism for business owners, as I said, to work together. It's fun, it's hometown events, and it also can be once a year, larger-scale events put on by these promotional associations within the entertainment district. So it's all, it goes back to building community, it's driving business to our restaurants and retailers as well. And I just wanted to tell you quick some examples of what that might look like. So it could be examples like the pictures that you see here, but it also could be things that are reoccurring so that folks who are visiting these areas, I'll use the Orchard as an example, you see they had a concert series, so implies repetition and unknown schedule. So what I think of are like, many places have a first Friday art festival, or the Saturday, you know, it's going to be barks and brews in the park. So bring your dog, have a beer sort of thing. And it's a known event. Or the farmer's market, oh, I know that's every second Saturday at this location. So those are also the things that we're trying to build with this as well, and the frequency and repetition and activation of these common spaces so that people know, hey, you know, I know there's always something going on at the Orchard, or something always going on in downtown Westminster, and, oh, it's Friday. I know that's when they do the art block, or that's when it's barks and brews in the park, or something like that. So we're also trying to build that frequency. And those are those more hometown, hey, oh, it's after work, do you want to meet at this event going on at the Orchard? And so that, of course, again, drives business for those retailers who are selling beverages in the common consumption area, but also it brings a lot of foot traffic to the retailers in that area. And a residual benefit is that familiarity that it breeds with the different areas. Oh, hey, I know, I know where to park, or I know how to get around the Orchard, I know how to get around such and such a place. I was there last weekend, and I was at the great event they did. So it also draws people back. So it adds additional sales later on down the road and breeds familiarity. So that's another benefit of these entertainment districts that, we actually heard that from some of the communities that we spoke with, that was those residual benefits of having greater exposure and awareness of the different areas and different shops in those areas. So it's not just about the folks selling the beer or the wine or what have you, but it's also you walk by and go, hey, wow, I like that. That's a neat shirt, or I like this, I got to check out that bookstore when I come back next weekend. It's those sort of interactions as well. So we're trying to build, in the end, no pun intended, but a buzz for the area. So you can have a benefit for all of the merchants there and the community. Again, these aren't large, large-scale things. These are really, we see them as community-building, business-building activities that are beneficial. Next slide, please. Okay, so the strategic plan connections, we saw this really as, we want our residents not just to enjoy the city and how beautiful it is, but we want them to fall in love with the city. So we want them to have that same sense of ownership and belonging and community. And you've mentioned that in your new vision for the city and mission and those strategic objectives of a shared sense of community, high quality of life, strong sense of community belonging, incredible, safe, well-maintained, vibrant destinations in Westminster. So we see this as contributing to those goals. And, you know, we feel that, you know, the more that people can have that sense of ownership and belonging, the more engagement that they'll have actually in in other areas. So there's all of these external benefits to having people feel comfortable in their community and knowing there's lots of fun things and being proud of your community. So it's sense of pride, sense of community, all leading to greater engagement, caring, and in the end, a higher quality of life is what we're trying to work for there. Next slide, please. So we wanted to show you the maps of the two proposed entertainment districts. And again, our limiting factor is, you know, size. So we've maxed out up to, we're at about 99.99 acres on both of these sites. So we wanted to maximize who was included there. And I just want to point out in the downtown Westminster piece that we did cross over and we picked up those shops that have Coca-Peli and some of the other businesses and purveyors of beverages who are in that location. So they actively wanted to be included. And obviously, we listened and have included them in this initial boundary for downtown Westminster. So we thought that was really important to include them. And the Orchard, as you can see, those were in consultation with them, the boundaries they thought would be most beneficial and activating as much of that common space. And folks that already, as we mentioned, you have those liquor licenses, who are able to serve alcohol that are within those boundaries. And I also just want to mention, I know we're specifically in the proposed ordinance going to identify and create these two initial entertainment districts. But it also allows you the general language so that, as Rob has mentioned, folks can come back from other areas, maybe the promenade, maybe some other area of Westminster that would like to say, hey, we'd love an entertainment district in our area. And so the door would then be open, and then there's a stated process. So they can enter into the process and be able to create another entertainment district. So in the future, if there was a groundswell from the business community in a certain area, hey, we want one, too, there is a process outlined in the proposed ordinance. So you would be able to do that, and city council would be able to vet that. And next slide, please. So next up, so we are here today, of course, to get your feedback. But if it was positive and you would like us to continue to move forward, some of the dates there, so we could have the first reading of this ordinance on May 9 to create Chapter 23 in the Westminster Municipal Code. Also, we would allow for in the future, as I said, additional entertainment districts that can be added as a result of the language within that chapter as necessary and as approved by its body. So with that, I think we're here to answer any questions.
Just wondering, would you create, to the point of having additional opportunity for entertainment districts over time, would you create like a website or some type of informational landing page where people could know who to contact, how to do this?
Yes.
I imagine it would have to be staff-initiated to bring it to council?
It would, but I would think, you know, that it would be from that push from the private sector that would approach staff, and then staff would present that to you.
But then that's why it's like, who do I contact?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And many of the cities that we've looked at, you know, we perused their websites, and they had just great, straightforward, here's what this is, here's how you apply, these are the links to the different, you know, state statutes, and here's our code as a city. So I thought, yeah, there's some very good templates that we could emulate. Yes, absolutely. Counselor Baker?
So the advantage of this is this empowers these local people in this area to do things and streamlines the process, which they can do now, but they have to go to the, if you like, the special license board each time. And this basically puts more authority into their hands and less paperwork to go through and less things like that. And there's no loss in holding them accountable for their conduct and errors.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
And special events, I think, are limited to six per year per applicant. So if they did a special event in Orchard, they could only do six of them.
Right. And so they could do one every weekend in, like, the summer months. And I would allow that.
Yes.
Is there any downside?
I would say the downside that I could see would only be people that don't want to have that in that area. So there might be people that don't want to have that much many people coming and having events in downtown Westminster that might live in the apartments. But that'd be the same if you had multiple special events that are going on, too.
Right. And you could have multiple special events sponsored by different people to get around the six limit anyway.
So there's really not a lot of downside for the city, for the licensees, because it doesn't require them to do anything. We can create an entertainment district and nothing could ever happen.
Right. And you're not forcing anyone to pay dues and stuff like that. It's a voluntary responsibility they take on. And if there's something bad about it, we'll know when people complain.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't show up because they don't like it in their neighborhood.
There you go. They'll tell us.
So I just wanted to share some comments. I don't have any more questions. But I'm looking at an email from November 10 of 2018, which is the first time I started bugging the city manager's office about a special entertainment district because Adrian Gutierrez, who runs the Three Margaritas, reached out to me after he had been hounding former city manager Trip and former councillor Shannon Bird about it. So, and I know I've hounded the city attorney's office about this, too. So I'm very pleased to see this come forward because I know there's need for it. You've mentioned the two different events. I know specifically Three Margaritas does a cultural dance event, that this would come into play as well as the concerts, which I know Counselor Seymour likes in the Orchard. So I'm very pleased to see this come forward. And I think it's going to be a great benefit to those areas.
Well, Counselor Baker took my question and what are the downfall. But I'm going to take it a step further and just say, in your research, it seems, it seems good. But it seems like not very many cities are doing this entertainment district. So I'm just wondering, in your research, have you found any reasons why, other than maybe geographically, it's not set up appropriately for them? I'm just like, Arbada, to me, seems like it, like Old Town Nevada seems like a good place, have that kind of thing. Like, how come more cities...
We've had COVID for two years.
Well, it would have been in place for 2011, though. That's what I'm, sure, it's a handful of cities, so.
Yes, Counselor, that's a great question. And that listing was not comprehensive. So I believe the number is about 21 or so. It's in the 20s of cities, municipalities throughout the state who have utilized the program. So I'm so sorry. It wasn't, that was just a sampling of to show size and variety and geographic distribution. And also, for example, Pablo, you know, wasn't on that list, but that was one that has a very comprehensive program. And gosh, I think within Pablo, there were 14 different initial entertainment districts recognized. So it's also, I think, the scale of the communities. And maybe, you know, maybe that would have something to do with it as well. But then, you know, there's plenty of communities that aren't, you know, I don't think anybody would say they're large communities, but particularly, you know, in the mountains and some of the more touristy areas, they have wonderful programs. And they were some of the first to set up this because they rely so heavily on tourism and activation. So, yeah, but I think you also asked the question, you know, did we talk to anyone who hasn't done it? Or we did not. But we did try to research everyone who's gone through that process.
Counselor, we'll follow up with a full list of the jurisdictions in the state that have entertainment districts. That would be helpful.
Okay. No, our neighbors don't. They'll come to our... True.
My question is, because I got hit with this when City of Westminster went to zero waste with their events, they made a horrible mistake of giving the vendors less than two weeks' notice that if our products weren't in zero waste, things, our stuff would be shut down. Two weeks. We're now in a supply chain issue. I can guarantee you, I've been to two restaurants in the last two weeks, that you order something and they can't give it to you in the correct size, or they can't do it to go because they don't have lids, or whatever the issue is. These people are on a shoestring. If they don't have zero waste, we look past it for this year until the supply chain gets better. There's no reason why we should say no to somebody because of things out of everyone's control. And having been a person that had to go through that, people need time, but most of all, they need to know it's out of their control right now. I wasn't in that, and I luckily had my packaging that was okay, so I didn't get thrown out of the festival. But less than two weeks' notice is just not right. Now, with the timeline with this, if this comes to us now, are these people going to be, are they able to form? Are they able to be working on their bylaws? Are they able right now to be doing a million things so that they can have this for this summer? That's my main question.
Yeah. So there's, I mean, anyone can create a promotional association without an entertainment district or whatnot, because it's a separate legal entity. They can create their bylaws. They just likely wouldn't have a city representative on their board at that time, but they can have them at whatever point in time they actually go through the application. So they can have their insurance already done. All this legwork can be done ahead of time. So then it comes down to, once this becomes official code, as a part of our code, then they can go right into the application process.
So are these two entities ready to go?
I believe that the Orchard's getting pretty close to that. I think they're going to the final steps of figuring out the promotional association requirements, who's going to be a part of that, having the attorney draft up that information. I don't know that we're close on downtown. I don't know that they have thought of who's going to be the promotional association. Because the Orchard is all privately owned, and Vestar handles the management of them now, used to own the land of there. They're really ready to go and have everyone all lined up. I don't think that we have that cohesiveness with all the different licensees in downtown at this time.
Well, go get a Orchard.
And I do know, a fellow, Mr. Agrio, already did the initial training for special permits and licensing. And so they've gotten... And so they've gotten the first and it was a rather extensive meeting on that too. With the understanding of, once council approves this, get ready, here it comes. So special permits is ready to go.
I just want to, because you brought up the zero waste thing, I wouldn't be in favor of tying it to that. I'm in favor of us encouraging that. But I don't think we're in a place where we should be demanding that on anybody. If you look at what happened during COVID, there were a lot of those things that were thrown out the windows, such as, you know, no single-use plastic. I think even Denver threw that out for a time being because they needed the ability to have that. So beyond supply chain and that, you know, I don't think that this is something I want, hinging on that. But I always look for opportunities to educate people on that in the community.
I just wanted to give my support for this. I've heard about this for a while, didn't know much about it until this, so thank you so much. I know a lot of businesses over there want this. It's going to help customer experience, it's going to help civic, not civic, but engagement, customer engagement, right? And the likelihood of the events being successful, the city's backing behind it. It's just a great, it's a great opportunity. So thanks for doing this.
Thank you.
I would just say, having worked on this with staff before I left, I just, you know, hopefully can recognize all the work and the staff members that were a part of this on the agenda. They did a lot of, like Nathan Lauren, did a lot of work into talking to other cities. And so I just want to recognize all the work that's been done. Yeah. So I'm excited. Thank you for bringing this and I'm sure COVID did not help.
No. Thank you, councillor, for recognizing that, that staff has worked very hard for a very long time on this. So we definitely want to recognize their efforts. And it's been such a collaborative effort as well. I think that's something that the city should be really proud of is, I mean, the vast number of departments that worked on this.
I'm hearing seven people say, bring it on.
Yeah.
Are there any other, any kind of limitations that you want in there or anything that, any direction other than let's get a draft and see what it's like?
The only thing I can think of is because when I go to Nantucket to help with weddings, they do have ordinances because if you're having something on the beach, it echoes everywhere and there's a certain time you shut down and that's it. There is this ten o'clock, what it needs to be for downtown. You don't have it quite as much. You have the people to the north of where the Orchard is, but not right on top of where the A-Lot will be the closest because, and I know they're excited about it, but they're the closest to those apartments. The rest is a little bit further to the south. But in downtown, you've got people all over. So if you're going to be a good neighbor, having lived next to the Weston for its lifetime and knowing they tried to do concerts and whatnot and I couldn't even talk to my neighbor in my front yard because of it. Neighbors are good things and it means having time limits and not blaring at the tops of your lungs. So I say nine, ten, but.
One or two time limits? That's what they're asking for.
You can put it in the code as time limits or you can make suggestions to SBLB as far as what council would prefer and still leave it in their discretion.
Those two areas have housing and I can't imagine you let it go past eleven. If you want people living down there.
Okay. And I'd be fine with eleven. I think that's a reasonable timeframe.
I must go to bed a lot earlier than everybody else. I get up before the crack of dawn. So I'm especially thinking, well.
What time do the stores close? Nine-ish?
Yeah, our concert's in at eight P.M.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, you know, in the summertime, it's still light, it's still, it's still a safety, you know? We don't want to create a bar, outdoor bar, because then there's associated problems with that.
I'm good with nine.
Yeah, because the closer you get, you know, they're still in the summertime, it's just getting dark then.
Maybe, is there like a recommendation that could be made based on what some other towns or cities do?
Sure, definitely. We can investigate that.
Because they, I bet.
Say two A.M., but.
Well, I would, but I also don't, I also don't want to hinge it off of what another city does because they're not, they're going to be different. I mean, the whole point of the living quarters is the people that live in our city. So I, I think, to me, ten is fine, but if, I understand what you're saying about nine. Personally, eleven sounds fine too, but I think more people would be reasonable with ten or nine.
At nine, what else are people going to do?
The intensive.
That's right.
Is to drive.
That's why, why do you want them there longer?
Well, and she said at the end of eight, right? So nine is fine.
I think in the Orchard, that's one thing, but in the downtown, most of the restaurants might be open later. So, and that's kind of what's going on there. So I don't, that's why I'm kind of like.
One thought, if we may, if we do something like nine, and I recognize it's a little bit arbitrary, but also there's some, you know, thoughts as far as after dark and those things, having been in the bar business, how people's mentality changes after a while, is that we can always start a little more restrictive. And then later, you know, we can, we can update the code and say, you know, and I'm just always, it's easier, you know, it's easier. It's easier to say no because you can always say yes, but once you say yes, it's out the door. So that's just my thinking, you know, kind of holding it and see where we go in the future.
I mean, also don't need to be punitive, right? I mean, we're not going to, hopefully, I mean, we should write it very, you know, as guidance.
Right.
We'd like it to be nine, but if it goes past, we shouldn't like.
Well, it's going to be. We're going to take.
I think you have a valid point that to start more restrictive. So if you want to do that, I'm happy with nine because you could, you could come back and say this is too early. And I think the point about the concerts is a good point because, I mean, you go up there during the concerts, people still, then they kind of go into the restaurants and stuff that are open for a little bit longer and then it kind of clears out. So it's not everybody rushing out. Okay. And I'm good with nine too.
I know you're not supposed to speak, but can you give me head nods if you're from the Orchard and it like nine o'clock is sort of open?
Thanks for being here. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your time.
They didn't say word. Five minutes.
You are right about thinking.
...
Back on.
Reaching planning objectives.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll jump right in. Introduce our consultant, Shannon, and you're going to lead us right in to the work at hand. I did a brief introduction earlier. Ideal focus tonight would be to get strong direction on the objectives as they are presented. And Shannon will walk us through that, and then to give us your feedback and any direction you'd like to see on the performance indicators, which we'll then bring back.
Hi, how's it going tonight? Last time to make sure that you can see everything after our last session where we went through, you gave us some feedback. We incorporated those changes and revisions just to make sure everyone is okay with what they have in front of them. Can you answer any questions? I know Counselor Lottie, you were for that one, so if you have questions, I know you sent some things over, we are happy to address those. And then as we go, we can talk about the performance and outcome measures that staff has developed. We've had a couple of sessions and staff has done a really great job of trying to find some measures that are really going to be supportive of your broader goals and objectives and those priorities. And figuring out how to make sure that they're measurable. And if there's not an existing measure or outcome, figuring out what kind of data they can start collecting to establish a benchmark. So that moving forward, you'll have that kind of information. So that was kind of the process that we've gone through for those performance measures and outcomes to give you a little bit of a glimpse into our thinking. Any questions right off the bat before we get going?
Let's go through.
All right. So we've got under preparedness and resilience. Focus staff objective number one. Ensure adherence to the national incident management system and incident command system. And the related performance, excuse me, an outcome measure is that a particular percentage of city staff and city council are trained on these two by a certain date. And we're still looking to finalize the exact percentage if we want it to be 100% or what percent makes the most sense, and that will dictate that date. We want to make sure that it's something that's driving and pushing and stretching a little bit, but not something that's not going to be achievable. Any questions on that one?
Before.
All right. Work collaboratively with city staff, business owners, and residents on resiliency and mitigation planning. And for this performance and outcome measure, we've tied it to that National Community Survey that the city does. They send it out every two years. They're sending it out again this year, so you'll have another one in 2024. That'll give you some pretty rich metrics around what respondents in the community think about things like these. So I've tagged it to the question that will be going out in 2022. Efforts to ensure your community is prepared for emergencies and disasters. And then you'll see in my comments off to the side. I've put in the closest comparable community survey response for 2020, the last time it was done. And the average rating, which was 68, goes from 1 to 100. And then where you fell nationally, as well as locally, for other communities that take that same survey and had a similar question.
My question here was with it saying mitigate risk to our natural, especially that natural. Our open spaces to me is right there, so we have to work collaboratively with ourselves and our businesses. Because we own the open spaces.
That's a good point.
Those are our biggest, I mean, during the Marshall fire, that's been a huge conversation around it. Fire department. Probably, I don't know, it's just our own staff, or if you want to put parks and rec, because they're the ones under it. Have to be included in there because the nat- our natural risk is our open spaces with all the grass.
So I need to get more specific just to city staff and departments, but you still want to include the other elements out there in the community. Just specify within that objective instead of city staff, list out those departments and individuals.
It'll have to be specific so that we know that it gets done. You need to name the ones that are involved in it.
Any thoughts for anyone else?
What does top five mean?
Top five. Thank you. That's a great question. I will zoom back over to my note here. So that would mean moving from of 18 local communities on the front range that took the same survey and had that same or similar question. Westminster ranked six out of 18, one being the best. So this would mean moving into fifth place, doing things that the next time the survey went around, you gained fifth. I think I put these both up here because there's been some conversation with council that you don't necessarily want to compare yourself to other communities because you have different things going on. So the other option is to do that average rating, which really speaks specifically to your community.
These are resident opinions of our preparedness. Is that how other communities rate themselves, or are we looking for something that's a little more objective for ourselves to be looking toward?
You could certainly have staff define something that's very objective and internal. I think that would probably make this one that you would need some benchmarking metrics around. So I think my recommendation, if that's how you would want to do, which I think is a good way to go for the performance and outcome measure for not the entire strategic plan, but this first annual kind of performance measures chunk. Maybe that is the performance measure and outcome to establish benchmark metrics that you have something to measure against moving forward.
Mayor, if I could, one question or observation and effort. The natural environment. I think there was some discussion among staff as potentially not only fires, but flooding, storm-related, even seismic issues are sort of a range of risks that the NIMs training could be applied to. So it just a thought that it wasn't necessarily targeting one natural hazard, but there was a range of risks.
I just know the one that has risen to the top since January is our open space. Unless the dam breaks, we'll be fine with that.
I'll let you know how that works.
Not at your home.
That's true.
So that second focus objective says collaboratively. And it mentions residents. How exactly, so but the measure, but there's no measuring how exactly. It doesn't need to be precise, but what is the plan to collaborate with residents on this? Is there gonna be some kind of measure?
A measure of the plan to collaborate? You certainly could put that in. I think with those kind of metrics, it sometimes falls into the realm of implementation and how staff plans to work collaboratively with. And that becomes more of just in some of these you will see that because you're establishing benchmarks and things, but it is more of how staff plans to work collaboratively. And do you just want to hear that staff is holding meetings on a quarterly basis, or they're forming some kind of hazard mitigation focus group? That gets participation. Because that's certainly something that you can put in here, but that's also gets a little bit into the realm of just how staff is going to be achieving these overall objectives.
So another way to say that would be that would be talking about how to get there, whereas the KPIs, the performance indicator, is what we achieved, which is the the different ratings or the measures of how done in the view of the residents participating in the survey.
And the measure should then reflect how via the outcome, right? If we're saying we're collaboratively specifically, then the outcome should reflect that. In other words, should we if this is going to be a collaborative, you know, that word is very specific. We say that a lot and we don't always do it. So I don't want to just say we're just because it sounds nice. I better, so what do we? I think we might need an outcome then, a measurable outcome that shows that the staff did work. That would measure that somehow.
Don't you think if we got a poor score from the residents, though, that would show that we didn't? Is that what I'm hearing? Jody is like, if we get a high score, then we feel that, you know, the residents must feel that we worked well with them to mitigate risk.
Well, if they are aware of what the city is doing in terms of hazard mitigation regards. So you can, this is one we talked about with staff a little bit because what the survey is measuring and what the city's intention, the intention is you want to improve hazard mitigation and make the city safer all around and do that with community participants. But how community or even people in this room may define hazard mitigation really varies a lot. So one of the ways you can measure it is just that awareness, which I think we've talked about a lot throughout our time together. Making sure the community is aware of what's going on, they understand what's going on, and there's some kind of outlet for them to be communicating. That's what this survey would really measure. Like, are they more aware of what's going on and what the city is doing in terms of hazard mitigation?
So this this rating is a resident one, so maybe there's something with the business survey that we do that.
It's all those elements. You can certainly do that and say that you wanted to have, I think we have a couple of other areas where we talk about some business ratings. If that's something that a business survey is put together, that's a question that could be incorporated. So you're getting that element of it.
I know Jody's gonna work on this anyway, so I know he's taking notes with our comments. Counselor Evans, did you have some?
I just think that we just need to remind ourselves that we're at the top level, right? And not to get so in the weeds as far as like how it gets done and just to make sure that we're at the policy level, doing things and overseeing that level and not trying to.
Next one.
All right. So this is one specific to employee engagement and effectiveness. Strengthen city workforce resilience effectiveness and strong culture around the city's mission, vision, guiding principles, and spirit values to contribute to the well-being, engagement, and retention of the city's workforce. There's a secondary one there, continue to provide mental health for the city's workforce with particular focus on public safety personnel to adjust, address job-related stress. And the reason that I've merged these two boxes together for this performance measure. And there's another one in another priority that references this Gallup B12 Employee Engagement Survey. The city is switching over to that Employee Engagement Survey this year. It's going to give some pretty rich data around employee engagement. How many times can they say that phrase in 30 seconds or less? And really give organizations some good insight into where staff is effectiveness, what staff like they need, what it might take to retain staff more effectively. So I think this is something I would recommend you get those survey results in and use those as benchmarks for moving forward. But some pretty rich data and it's completely different survey than the city's done in the past. So it's not going to be comparable to a lot of the things that have been existing.
Not to get too in the weeds, but I am on this specific area. We talked about employee engagement and retention and all those things. And specifically with certain departments we've been talking about over the last twelve months. If you are only measuring organization-wide, it looks skewed compared to department. So I'm just want to make sure that look at the measurement that we're looking department by department so that we have a better heat map if we have a problem area in the organization.
I'd agree with that. I also think that slightly in the weeds, but if you're looking at your turnover rate based on issues identified in an exit interview, I think you've already kind of lost that. You know, they're gone. So I don't know how effective that is versus focusing in on the issues that are identified in employees at this section room.
I agree, and I think that that exit interview information can provide some insightful information transitionally for staff who may be leaving the organization over the course of the year while you're getting that engagement serving data in. It gives you a little bit of insight. And then when you get that data in, you'll be able to see if there are correlations, if it really supports those exit interviews. It just makes the case even stronger once you get from serving.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point because sometimes people aren't going to be honest. But they are when they're way out the door. Measuring against both, I think, is our idea.
Right, because we could have the same turnover rate, but the reasons could change. So right now we're finding retirement, family relocations, just leaving the workforce earlier than thought. Right? But if we track those as well as the rate of departure, we can see if there's any shifts in the reasons why people are either leaving or whatnot.
Just to add, we're getting in the weeds because that's why we're here, where they still get these performance measures. Shouldn't that be quantitative, a little bit more? I know it's outside of our control. It's a little bit outside of our control, right? But there are some things that we have, that we can do. So could that be a little more quantitative versus just in decrease? Doesn't it?
Yes, ideally, yes.
It's hard to remember. I understand, but.
I think ideally, yes, and I think staff wants it to be more quantitative, but they want to have some good data to base it off of. So I think what you'll see in further iterations, and I know this is a five-year strategic plan, some of these goals, you establish benchmarks this year. You can then get that quantitative measure for next year and things like that. That's what they're hoping for with a lot of these where you don't see a quantitative to establish that quantitative amount, then you have something to compare and track against moving forward.
You know, we'll, thank you, Counselor, for that question. We'll, you know, what we can do is look at, we talked with HR and see if there's, for example, a 10-year average or a five-year average preceding, I would say COVID, and see if there's a way to say, you know, if that's lower than what we have now, maybe set that as a potential target as a performance measure to return to our pre-COVID average or something like that. So we'll look at those numbers and if we can find one that's already historically supported, we'll advance it to your consideration.
You know, so many comments on that kind of objectives. All right. Next one is to create the redevelopment toolkit to encourage private sector investment, business growth, community resiliency, and adaptive reuse. And there are a couple of performance measures in here. First one is to have that redevelopment toolkit created by December of 2023. Pause there and get reactions or questions.
I was thinking, because we have so much commercial space that could be adaptively reused, that it would be good to call it redevelopment and adaptive reuse toolkit. So, you know, I don't want to discount the fact that we have so much opportunity for that.
What does that mean?
Adaptive reuse. Could be like any of our older commercial centers, like the name's now Brook Hill Center or something. Just being able to reuse those, like we have a, okay, 128th and Zunaia Bank left. Could it be reused for a restaurant? And what might we be able to put into a toolkit like this? Stop redeveloping or adaptively reusing this building and are there?
I think as long as we put it in a grease trap, that's fine, isn't it?
I don't know if I would be in that.
Appreciate it.
I am just encouraging us to, I like adaptive reuse.
May I add? Both counselors, that's a great point. That's a great example. That would probably be in the adaptive reuse toolkit, which is to reexamine our grease trap requirements, which we are actively doing with a case, at least two cases in point. So that would be an example. A more, a more direct one for city council would be recently the Marzec Fine Foods coming into a former bank building and taking the US Bank building and adaptively reusing it. So without scraping it to the ground and rebuilding or redeveloping, it would be rebuilding the interior and the HVAC systems and such to turn it into a grocery store instead of a bank. That would be an example that council's been involved in recently, but there are many things.
How does that differ from really redeveloping?
So you don't, you don't, you don't scrape the building, you don't take a, you don't take a building and scrape it, reexcavate the site, build a new foundation and a whole new building. You use what was already built, and in this case, I think that was built in the 70s or 80s.
And you don't view that as just all part of the redevelopment spectrum?
It's just, it's just.
It's just words.
Like, it's like adaptive reuse, like Vasa where the Safeway is, or Five Irons Church where there used to be a Walmart.
But I, too, you know, this is just a toolkit, so if a business comes here and says, I, I need X number of square footage and XYZ, what do you have in your inventory? Oh, we got it, you know, without a scrape.
Well, I, one of the other examples in like that kind of scenario is churches. I've heard from a couple of different churches that they've had a really hard time being able to get into the city, where we have plenty of space that probably would be fine quarters for churches. But our, you know, whatever kind of rules we have have gotten in the way of that. I mean, I don't, I want to.
It's maybe easier than grease trap.
Yeah, and I mean, that gets into my, my second point. You had it at the second one, but you have here realize 100 million in private sector investment. I, I don't know that I really like an arbitrary number because then we're trying to hit a target that maybe the market's not going to drive to. What, I want the need to be there in order for us to see what the toolkit is. So if you have a church, we're going to try to match you with the place that makes sense for a church. You know, if you have a saddle business, do we have anything that, if it's a saddle business? I mean, we, to me, we're setting ourselves up to either drive to objectives that that maybe aren't there otherwise. Does that make sense what I'm saying? Like, it should be market and needs driven for people who want to come and be part of the city. It shouldn't be because it's an arbitrary number goal.
Did the number come from something like from years past that we were looking at?
We all went to Lindsay.
Lindsay Kimball will join us on this, on this. What? Oh, please, yeah.
And if I could just, just back up a second as well. And I apologize because I was probably speaking Floridian when I wrote redevelopment toolkit. We did not have a distinction between redevelopment and adaptive reuse. They were synonyms. So I apologize, and I just, I want you to know that. So I apologize, and I just, I want you to know that, you know, absolutely, 100% didn't intend for that to sound like we were going to scrape everything. I think adaptive reuse is the most responsible type of redevelopment or type of activity that you can do. So I, sorry, I just wanted to get that out there. And to answer your question, so it is hard to come up with a number, right? Because we, we haven't had a defined toolkit in the past. So what we tried to do was look at, okay, before COVID, what, what were we doing on an annual basis? And then looking forward and knowing what's the pipeline and what might be a potential candidate for redevelopment program? What does that look like? It's, it's difficult because it's never going to be a straight line. It's going to be a very volatile amount. So if you were trying to find, pin it on a number on an annual average, honestly, that's very difficult just because of cycles in the real estate market, large economic forces we can't control. So if you did want to do that at some point, I'd recommend a rolling average to do something like that, to even out that volatility. But that's, that is where that hundred million came from. We said, okay, in five years, what do we think we could reasonably accomplish?
So, so here's a suggestion and a couple of examples. To me, I feel like, and obviously, I need three more people to agree with this, but if you listen to what our residents that live here say, is they're sick of, you know, all the rebuilding with all the empty space. So I think that's where the term adaptive reuse is appealing. But if you're going to look at that in terms of a target, the target should be less empty space. And I don't think that the residents are going to, you know, that makes more sense to a resident to say, our target is to have X percent less of, you know, empty retail or commercial space or whatever it is. That makes, it makes more of a, to me, that makes more sense of what we would want to go after. But it also has to match desires and needs of the community. And give you another example, forever and ever, people complained about the empty builder square. Now there's a lot of apartments, I don't hear less complaining, it's just a different complaint. Because people aren't happy with the amount of apartments that are there, so, I mean.
They're ugly.
Yeah, we, they don't look as pretty as the rendering, I'll say. But, but point of being is, you know, that, that's more of a, to me, is more of a measurable thing that I would be open to as something like, you know, X amount less vacancy. Because that's more what I've heard, I don't know about my colleagues, but that, and I think the number isn't going to be what, you know, what the residents would want us to go after.
I could get behind that, yeah, a reduced vacancy.
Commercial business. How much of this is tied into the property owners? Because really, they have the biggest vested interest to, or redevelop or whatever the heck you want to rent their space.
But, but to that point, Bruce, this is back to my point I was making. We have had a, a system where we're, say, the TOD, great example. When I had both met with the gentleman who owns the, the saddlery down there, he has half the space that's open.
Ten thousand square feet.
He's went through multiple tenants that he turned away because they didn't fit what we think should be there. Opposed to, he had tenants that wanted to lease out the space, so to me.
So the city turned away his tenants?
You're correct, so.
What's reason?
I don't, I don't know all the reasons, you'd have to ask him. I just know that that's what he shared with, with me and he shared that with the mayor.
Well, if they were a tattoo parlor, I could understand, it's outlawed, but for, how dare you?
Without seriousness, though, if, if your goal is to reduce vacancy, there's more of a, there's more of an incentive for the city as an organization to say, we want to match open space with the tenant that we know is looking for a space. So if I'm a tenant and I come to economic development and say, hey, here's the kind of business I want to bring to your city and the space. You know, if they're doing a good job about knowing what's vacant with property owners, they're going to be able to marry them together.
You make, I, I, I just want, this is fine, this is fine.
So I have a question on timing, on the measures here. So the redevelopment toolkit created by the end of next year, what's the driver behind that time? Seems pretty far out, and isn't the strategic plan supposed to be? Well, I'm sure not for everything, but as much as we can within the year?
No, the strategic plan is actually a little, it's a little bit more longer term than that. So you'll have the overall strategic plan in about five years. But you'll have built into that some measures that are one-year measures, some measures that are two-year measures. Right, so you can see some movement, but what you're hoping for is that. For these broader, the council objectives that are a little bit more visionary ones that are broad, those are the things that you're going to want to have measures that are about your five-year range. And then your staff's focused objectives kind of nest into those. Some of them are a little bit more longer term, and particularly when it comes to the economic development ones, those are generally a little bit more longer term. It takes a little bit more time to really start seeing kind of the fruits of your labor when it comes to some of those things. And that's why you'll see throughout this plan, some things have a longer timeline. And then there are some things that you can accomplish within a year because they lead you closer to that goal and kind of build upon one another.
Operationally, when you have a long timeline, you still need to know how you're going to get there, right? And when I look at this, end of next year, to develop the toolkit, I'm just curious why that would take some twenty-something months? Is there a reason? What, how that date came about?
So we certainly would want to get it done sooner and as fast as possible. Some of the, the challenges that we have right now are staffing. So the two positions that would be very integral in developing this and interfacing with the development community and property owners to make sure that it was a toolkit that was accessible and meaningful for them. You know, so we, we weren't just creating it in a vacuum, but having, I think the private sector input's going to be really important. Those two positions are currently vacant. We're trying to move as fast as possible as other departments are to fill those. But it's primarily a capacity issue right now. Would be happy to prioritize it in a different way, you know, whatever direction we receive, it's fine. And, but we do need to leave some time so that we can engage with the property owners and the private sector to understand what the challenges are to certain properties, adaptively, being adaptively reused or some other improvement. Because I think, you know, in my experience of creating these toolkits, that is very valuable because you don't want to spend a whole bunch of time and then create something and then no one uses it or is like, well, why'd you do it like this? We told you, you know, we needed a roof program and you made a facade program or, you know, something like that. And then also coming back, obviously, to this body for approval of the documents, so.
So staff coming out, that makes sense.
May I add, Lindsay's being probably a little polite. The, the economic development team is, is quite likely the hardest-hit team in terms of turnover in the city. The vacancy rates, when we brought Lindsay on board, were probably the lowest of any employee group.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent vacancy, so she is rebuilding us as, you know, vigorously as she can. But I, this is what has affected that performance indicator. We could advance it, I, I think, a quarter, you know, if you get a little bit more aggressive. You know, bring it in at the end of Q3 of, of twenty-three, that would give us twelve months. But we would also try to exceed that, come in before then.
So I'm just curious, how big is this set right now?
We currently have eight people.
And it's fifty percent, we had.
You were down to sixteen?
Yeah, we've, we've rehired, so goes, our full strength is twelve.
One, one thing on the, even if we don't put, realize a hundred million in private sector investment, I think reporting on private sector investment is kind of, you know, that's not really, you know, much of a goal. So I, I know there's some type of in-between where we're saying, we cover private sector investments or, you know, some way to say, there's a heartbeat, we're measuring it. Yeah, just an encouragement for us, you know, like a goal out there. Maybe it doesn't have to be exactly a hundred million.
I guess, okay, yeah.
I would be that, go back there. Anyone else?
Maybe not? Anyway, it's kind of like, it's exciting to see the world.
Give them a goal, like, go.
So, sorry? That second one, that second focused objective, the measures, the reports? That, what's the frequency, when, who's the audience? Is it annual report, is it just the second?
You're reporting on existing jobs.
Yeah, and the report on the, so all the reports, when are, when and where, when and who?
We anticipate those to be annual. The data is only published quarterly by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, so we couldn't be any more frequent than that.
And who targeted the industries?
Those are in concert with OEDIT, our state economic development department. So the state has broad categories and then additionally Metro EDC targets in on specialized areas for the front, front range of industries that both have a potential for growth, are consistent with our labor force, or compatible, complementary to the existing labor force, and have that potentials for growth.
Can we not report now? Sorry.
No, sorry.
We don't report, we don't do any reporting now on any of this?
We do have an annual report, which breaks down all industries. It doesn't specifically call out the targeted, what we call mixed codes or, that's the national standard for qualifications of the industries.
Okay, so you, you, we talk about getting primary employment, i.e. good-paying jobs in the city for our employed resident. It's just a good goal, but also isn't, is it the other side of that? To attract employers, we have to have housing and an amenity base that actually people, particularly affordable living in Westminster to attract these employers? So are we looking at that side of things?
So that was not something, and I'm sorry, can you scroll up because I can't see what the, I've got the wording for the name. So we, my team hinged in on business community here, so I guess I would just defer to, you know, this body if you wanted to broaden, you know, what impact should be measured.
You know, you have a lot of employers, whether they're primary employers or just employers, like trying to run this restaurant but can't hire people. And we can't hire people because there's, no one can afford to live in the area. So what are we doing about that?
It's not one of our strategic objectives.
Kind of, it's because if we're talking about supporting the business community, I guess we're just saying, well, high-five you.
Just, I mean, we just approved voting for two of the, probably the biggest housing developments that we've seen in, in how long as far as single-family homes. I mean, I don't feel like there's room for us to be making that a specific target, in my opinion.
Can I suggest something on that one? That, so yes, you're a hundred percent right, that you do need to focus on kind of both sides of the coin with that one. But that is a really big endeavor, endeavor, to have wrapped in to the first year of the strategic plan. And what I would suggest is that maybe midway through your five-year cycle, that becomes one of the things that you look at again. Have we made enough progress in this area or kind of standardized our reporting and established our benchmarks and how we're working with the business community here to start introducing some more of those focused staff objectives? And maybe they are around affordable housing and things like that. Not that it doesn't need to be addressed now, in metro Denver, that's certainly a concern. But I think to have both of those things in the plan is going to make both of them less effective. You're not going to have enough capacity within the community or within staff to really focus wholeheartedly on either one and make some good progress.
I don't see how we don't, how we don't mention those.
Because we made that decision.
Well, because, well, because if you want that to be a goal, we get to vote on the goal. And I don't think there's enough people to vote on the goal. I think you're just pulling this affordable housing in because it is tangentially connected to jobs. I mean, yeah, the connection is there, but no. I mean, we were talking about how we help businesses make business. If we are talking about affordable housing, that should be its own separate thing. And you're just slowing down the discussion and wasting our time. Well, we've not even gone through one thing, we got four more to go.
It's not a waste of time because Jody said one of our objectives here is to look at the objectives, too. It's the, it's the final look of the objectives. I don't want to look at affordable housing.
I think one of the objectives of tonight was to finalize the focused objectives of staff. Because I think we've gone through and council has really gone through and approved those broad council objectives. And the work tonight was really supposed to be just making sure that we captured any revisions or changes during that last book session. And make sure that these performance metrics were on track or get some direction from council, correct?
No, I agree, I think that's where some of the frustrations coming from because we, we had our goal set, set out, like, like them or not. The majority of council set the goal, these are the objectives. To your point, this is fine-tuning.
My recommendation would be, not that affordable housing gets completely taken off of the table for five years, but that it is not a specific objective reflected in this plan. That's something that's, council's talked about quite a bit. And we've done a lot of work to make sure that these objectives are where you all want them. And we're just kind of fine-tuning language in those focused ones.
Just one more piece there, and it's really related to climate action. I think when we talk about a creative, to create a structured system of support, and it has to promote resiliency, and not having a climate action-focused objective seems like a miss.
So we're acknowledging, we agree that those are missed in our objectives overall.
Right.
Not that you guys agree.
I just think it's a huge, huge miss.
Do you, I, I have to ask, because do you think that every single thing that the city does needs to be in the current objective? There were former objectives, such as the sustainability department, that it's there now. Those things are being tackled. These are things that this council needs to tackle in the next couple of years.
We have dog licenses in there, so we're going down to the level of dog licenses, I think we can have climate action.
But we as a body decided not to, and that's, that's.
That's all I was saying, that, I, I know we agreed, but just to raise that point again, it's a huge miss. I mean, we have low-level things in here, so it's not like we're, we're blowing in climate action. It's, we have a lot of things.
But to add, like, it's not being addressed is disingenuous, I'd pass.
And Councilor Azadi, one thing that I would like to point out that we talked a little bit about, and I will scroll to the end of the document because I think it's not a hundred percent addressed your concern, but it does get to part of it. A lot of the, sorry to make everyone a pause, I'm going to scroll here, there we go. So at the end of the document, staff went through and really crosswalked things that were kind of ongoing or had been objectives in previous plans or initiatives and things that were now just embedded in staff work and the way that staff looks at things and kind of the lens through which they see things. And sustainability is one of those things. But doesn't 100% address your point, but let me see if I can find. All right, so here's one, incorporate sustainability best practices that reduce energy and resource use through direct city and community actions. An example of that was to update the unified development code. Well, some of those things are being captured in kind of the ongoing bits of the way staff approaches all of the work that they do.
Thanks for trying to make it better. Not helping, but I, I do appreciate it.
It is embedded in there a little bit. I know you want a specific goal.
Because it was a former objective. And so those things are now embedded in everything the city does, because it was a former objective.
Okay, let's get moving on.
All right, so the last one for this priority was to provide four workshops annually for local businesses on the subject of workforce development resources, tools, and grant programs.
I see nobody, let's get our priority two.
All right, to foster safe and livable housing through proactive code enforcement and rental housing inspections. This one, there was some conversation in this group at the last work session about the different kind of measures. So with staff, we created 15% increase in staff initiated versus community initiated enforcement touchpoints in the first year. And to kind of balance that measure and see where overall community voluntary compliance with the code was, they've added that. That it gives you a little bit more insight.
For try and increase it?
To increase voluntary compliance.
Are we defining touchpoint?
So typically, code enforcement is community initiated. And any recalls, any calls for the code violation, this could be code enforcement proactively going and making those contacts.
So it's contacted by touchpoint?
Yeah, so the touchpoint is either a resident typically or a business contacts us, that's a touchpoint. Staff initiated is the staff would go out on their own and identify a need for a compliance at a property.
I'm going to assume that going to be hiring staff to do that because usually cities are staff just to accommodate calls. Like a pretty thin resource that we usually have.
We're not, we're not necessarily making that connection, so this could be restructuring the way that we you know, one of the ways to interpret this measure is that we reduce the number of complaints from our community by being more proactive ourselves with problem areas. Problem house, for example, we would be more, taking more initiative there to reduce the number of them. That would shift the percentage, shift the percent, relative percentage between the two. And it may be more efficient for us to do that rather than continually receiving, for example, complaints from a problem house for five years. We may decide to get more aggressive as, to the extent that we can with our ordinance. And that may cut down four years of complaints coming at us. And that would change the percentage of staff percent initiated versus resident complaints. So that's another way to look at that KPI is, is to not make it necessary for the mayor to call or for you to call, because that actually got dealt with through a voluntary compliance after a staff contact, when we hopefully goes.
All right, the next one, increase the use of technologies and non-commissioned public safety services by leveraging positions such as corresponders, homeless navigators, and non-sworn report writers. One thing I'd like to point out here in blue, you see that new word technologies? In working with staff, they felt it was important to make sure that technologies got included. Because there are some upcoming technologies that are going to help the police department do that report writing that would cut down on how much time they spend anyways. They just wanted to make sure that was recognized and transparent in their work. Because there have been technologies in the past that increased their time. Yes, exactly.
So is that just referring to report writing, that technology word?
Yes.
Can that be closer together? Because it's.
Yeah, absolutely.
And do we only have one KPI for, for, there's a lot of things, like co, corresponders, navigators. Do we want to put something in there to?
We could, we certainly can. I think when we wrote it like this, we were thinking about what council's original intention behind these objectives. Or in one of them was that your police officers could spend more time in the field versus time doing administrative tasks. So we could certainly say, expand it to all of those different categories. The overall intention is really that they're out in the field more, right?
Decrease the number of reports taken.
Question for the fire department. I, I, I know that one of their biggest needs is a behavioral health specialist. Because they have a lot of issues related to that from the work. Is there, can we add that in to that list of, so corresponders, navigators, behavioral health specialist?
I think it's in this mental health, um, the very first page.
Do you want to call it out more specifically here? Because we're calling out.
Because this is for the police department. I thought I read one that we could have, I didn't need that, right?
It could be called, you know, it could be more specifically called out in the, on the first page, you know, where we have multiple fire department. One's on the bottom.
Front page, folks.
I think it's here, anyway, you could call it out.
Oh, call out there?
Yeah.
Can we add that in there? Any objections to that?
Where are we?
First page is probably all.
Objective number two, focus objective number two.
After tonight, we are going to number these.
Yes, we are.
I have yesterday, I have already in my head, I'll keep numbering these.
I don't want to see this again. I've seen this too many times. Tom Bruce, love a dialogue, really love dialogue.
All right.
I need to share you with you Monty Python's The Art.
I've seen that.
But the next.
Ah, this is that.
The next focused objective, ensure recruitment, training, and retention strategies for the police department. And that language has changed, it was public safety before. That requested that we make this specific police department to ensure that Westminster is a desired place of employment. This one, we again have tied to that Gallup Q12 survey. And once those results come in and they have that data, this can be refined. They really want to have that data to specify department by department, as you talked about a little earlier.
And I have been advised by HR following the earlier question or common discussion about this, this can be broken down by department. These measures, Gallup gives us that, department by department.
Have we ever thought about for fire and police personnel, like a down payment assistance program? Some cities are doing this now to help retain.
I think we have 100 applicants for our fire department for each opening, don't we? I think the fire department's one of the most sought after jobs in Colorado, isn't it?
Okay, then police. I mean, I'm just trying to think of like, you know, if we set ourselves apart and have something that keeps people or attracts people.
Most officers don't like to live in a city that they police.
Oh, it doesn't have to be in the city, it's just a down payment assistance.
Right now, we're giving them a $10,000 bonus. Okay, next.
All right. The next set are focused around people experiencing homelessness. And I know we had quite a discussion around this, so we put some very specific targets in here. And also made sure that, because one of the things council was concerned about was making sure that you kind of take care of it. Continuum of care, really, and that you start out with care, resources, support. But then at some point, where does the enforcement come in? And how are you tracking? Getting that system into place is really what a lot of these are focused around. So the first one is to decrease, a percentage decrease in homelessness within the veteran population, specifically within the city. You know, Councilor Azadi, you had a question about why we're just focusing on that group and not others. And one of the reasons for that is because it's tracked right now. Not all of those different populations.
Our partners are tracking that, and that is their number one in Adams County, and we are a partner in that. And we will probably hit that goal by the end of the year.
It's also paid for by the federal government.
Yes, yeah, great deal of assistance opportunities too.
Yeah. And once they hit the zero for veterans, we'll go to the next.
The next.
So we're only focusing on that, though?
There's another one.
Yeah, there's a couple in here.
There are a couple of others that staff put in that they thought would be really salient to these objectives. So this next one is the number of beds, rooms, or permanent supportive housing or other programs that the city funds or contributes towards people experiencing homelessness legally and safely stay. So that kind of helps out with that transitional housing and some of the questions you had earlier tonight around the different resources.
Greater than 10 rooms, that would be our goal.
Isn't that the opposite goal? Shouldn't our goal be to reduce the number of rooms we give away?
No, to have more options than just 10 hotel rooms to turn people to, and if a hotel has already said, no, we're not taking that person again. There's some other options.
I think that's just encouraging more people to come here.
But we've had this discussion, we can move on. The word continue? If we're lacking the amount of options, should that word be more, like increase? Got more sources sort of thing versus continue the current state? I think we need more options.
I think continuing to work with them as they try to find more options is the point. It's just no options available.
We're doing that with Arvada.
Yep.
Building the big complex.
Yeah, Jeffco is making more, Adams County is on the, they're starting their process.
And we're putting money into it, so.
Takes time.
We're a partner.
All right, the next one. The objective, develop processes and protocols that clearly communicate available resources and allow the city to easily identify when resolution has been reached and/or enforcement is required. And this is the one that we refine language to really respond to council's discussion at the last work session. From the measure associated with that is to establish a baseline measurement. This is newly up and running, using a full year of Westminster-specific data in that homeless management information system. So once you have a full year of data, you'll have a baseline with, and then staff can revise if you need some. Next one is a similar performance measurement. And it's to continue to research best practices and policies developed at the state level to address the causes of homelessness, employ those best practices around trauma-informed care when homelessness does occur, and provide recommendations for changes in city policies and procedures that may help address source issues in alignment with best practice. This one, it's a little bit wordy, and I feel like I want to cut down about half of the words in there. But the intention is really to speak to mayor what you asked at the last meeting. What can we do with, with, while still being in compliance with code? And where are those best practices and how can we address the situation and help those things while remaining within code?
I would expand that, though, because I think the intent, I heard that from the mayor, and certainly the intent I would want is where code is a, is a barrier to somebody like a church who wants to provide reasonable care, that, that we're not getting in their way with that. That would be my, my thought, and that's what I heard in the conversation, so it's good to know what we can do within code, but it's also good to know where the code gets in the way, much like we're doing with the revising the code for climate stuff.
You need to have like a temporary stay code amendment and evaluate that, or?
The state put in parking, in a parking lot. And we have two churches that are allowing that in their in their buildings, and, well, in the parking lots, but some are going beyond. And some have, one has a gym and so has showers available and lets them come in, provides towels and stuff. And one, and lets them come in and use the restroom. And then one doesn't have those capabilities, but has a portable body, so they have access to a bathroom during the night. So, some are doing that because and even in the most severe weather, we don't, we don't have codes that allow people to come in, get warm or get cold, get cool in the air conditioning, so.
Like temporary shelter or, you know, something.
Let me think of a clarification on this one, because I think what I'll do, I had originally written out the one that needs to be highlighted with my note here. Identify mechanisms to allow for service provision while remaining in compliance. I want to revise the language on this to reflect what you just said. That clarification, that makes it, so I'll revise that.
Did they die outside in the cold or worry about the one in however many fans of having a fire in a building that doesn't mean building code, they're covering up somebody else in the flights? I mean, does it really matter? Number three.
Right, on to number three. First focused objective, develop and implement citywide events that foster camaraderie and community connections through neighborhood participation. Performance and outcome measure, 70% of annually scheduled city events will prioritize neighborhood audience or be locally focused. Mayor, I know you had some question about the lead being the communication team for several of these, and that really encompasses your special events coordination and cultural affairs, they know. So it really wraps in several different staff functional groups under that communication team.
That's reason.
Really, but isn't this a PRL function?
Well, that's what I thought, and, and if we're, if we're measuring votes, it's who, who owns the event and it's not communication that owns the event, is in my head.
But all those people got wrapped in last year.
Events got pulled out of PRL.
Yeah, events got pulled out of PRL, have been.
We can revise this to better reflect. Yeah, that's not a.
So who does events?
Events is, Councilor Seymour is correct, special events and cultural was moved from parks, rec and libraries into the innovation and communication division. That was, that was a, that was a chunk of the large increase that showed up in that team. That was done.
18 months ago, about 18 months ago.
That, so, but we will work on that, mayor, that the, the way that that showed up as, as the lead.
Well, I think part of it is, mayor, didn't we want to eliminate the communications station? I think, I think we've talked about it several times in my recollection. That was that $1.9 million addition to the budget.
But that's not a discussion we're willing to have tonight.
Got you. That is a discussion we should have a.
We still have people that are responsible for that, we just have to identify them.
And I will be, I'll change that to better specify which division our staff is actually handling those duties.
Yeah. What are they, innovation?
This communication team under CM, and not its own department, right?
Pardon me?
Communications team is not a department, it's under the city manager.
It's a division in the city manager's office.
What does the metric actually mean? Prioritize a neighborhood audience?
I think that that's speaking towards wanting to have things throughout the city and not just in a couple of locations. They really wanted to focus on using some of those neighborhood HOA associations and having things that are more They really wanted to focus on using some of those neighborhood HOA associations and having things that are more out in the community doesn't really describe very well. But not just focus on a couple of hubs within the city and making sure that these events are taking place all over the city so that community members from across the city can actually come to them.
So we mean, we mean diversity of neighborhoods? Okay.
Next one, ensure that Westminster's events and programs represent and are inclusive to the city's rich cultural diversity. And also that at least five community events annually will highlight culturally diverse performances and/or vendors.
Innovate.
Yeah, what do we mean? Wouldn't we want to ensure all of our events highlight culturally diverse vendors? Why are we specifying it just to five? It should be part of the land that.
Do we have annually? Do you have any idea?
That's a good question, sir.
We do, we, we haven't for two years had any.
Right, right, because.
Yeah, so we're just picking up all those pieces and we, we weren't sure what the campus was going to look like. COVID and even this year.
Why was a good number?
But can we just say all of them?
Well, because, think about it in terms of this, I just went to the adult history account. That's not really a cultural event, that's just a fun goofy event versus a Latino festival that's, or multicultural event that is specifically laid out to do highlight people's cultures. So like not every, like the Beer Fest, that's not going to be something that's going to be specified on a culture, specified on as many good beers as they can get in.
But this, this doesn't say cultural events, it says highlight culturally diverse performances and vendors. And/or then, vendors are in all events. So my, my, my question is, wouldn't we want to have that be the lens as to how we view everything? As much as we can, in every event, we should always have some culturally diverse vendors?
I agree. I don't think it's that hard to incorporate that in. So that everybody feels like they're.
I guess what, what, what does that mean? Like, what is cult, like, am I different if I'm a vendor? Does that mean I'm not culturally diverse because I'm white and a woman? Or is it because I'm white and a woman that it's culturally diverse? Like, I don't understand what that means.
Instead of vendors, maybe pull up a little bit from vendors, maybe focus on the events themselves. Maybe you want to have five community events that are, like Mayor Protem Demat said, that are specific culturally focused events throughout the community.
Because when you get to vendors, that costs money and people have to make choices. And small businesses can't afford what normally the city charges for. At least if you want local, if you want anybody in the metro area, you probably can find somebody. But if you want to stick with helping local people, you start tart, you start narrowing the field because of the cost.
I, I like the idea of pulling it up because I think it's unreasonable to say vendors. Because I know, you talk, talk to the folks that put on these events and sometimes they're begging to get, like, say they have a food truck event. I mean, those food trucks are super busy all the time. So if you're gonna say, okay, we want you to get ten food trucks, now we need you to fit these cultural groups, I mean, that's going to be very difficult to do at a metro level, I think.
Inclusivity is difficult, that's the purpose of inclusivity. It's not. I mean, we shouldn't just do what's easy, we should do what's right. And saying that we would like, or we would encourage, or we would try to have more inclusive X, Y, Z, there's nothing wrong with that just because it's hard.
Oh, I don't have a problem with striving for it, I have a problem with demanding it.
No one's demanding it, I'm asking why aren't we doing this for everything? We should have a guidance, we should have a guidance that the, that this is the, the lens we, we take this, is we want to be as inclusive as possible. Because those cultural vendors actually have a much harder time getting gigs.
Maybe it's like not saying at least five, but we just say, you know, strive to include or highlight culturally diverse performances and vendors in all of our events. And then we could just see how we do.
With no metric, just leave it?
Mm-hmm.
I agree with that.
Are you guys okay with that?
I feel like you're going backwards on your cause, but sure, because now it's got no teeth in it. It's just, we're always gonna, and then if that's the case, then fine, let's just always do that and not have it an objective in our strategic.
Well, you know, it's, it's in there and it's, you know, that could be achieved through different ways. Like the mayor just highlighted, it's, we're kind of expensive to get a booth. So maybe some of the ways we do that is allow for some spots to be offered to local vendors or in the city that you don't normally get.
So we would play really favors? Wouldn't be a favor of that.
Play favors?
That would be a guess. Hey, you've got an odd sounding last name, so you get to be in a booth for free?
Um, no, it's not how it, that's the point of it.
Yeah, I wouldn't think you'd want that.
Well, no, we're not talking about.
That's not what that is, so that's not how you define culture. Culture is arts, music, writing, it's what makes you, it's, it's part of your identity. It goes beyond how your name sounds, my name sounds funny, so what? What's your point?
My point is that governments should never play favors.
When that playing.
Governments should be open to everyone all the time based on their work, attitude, and effort. And no one should be excluded. And governments in the past excluded people that they didn't like.
The reason why DAI exists is because whole groups of people have been systematically excluded.
That's just, that's exactly what I just said, right?
Therefore, it will take folks like you and I to change that course.
And how do we change it? By making it open our opportunity plan to everybody and not playing favors.
This isn't playing favors. I would encourage you to take some training.
Oh, thank you very much.
I could teach you.
So kind of you.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's loop back around to the performance measure that we have up here. I've heard two recommendations, one that we brought in a little bit, to strive to have all community events include some culturally diverse performances under vendors. Or we can tweak this metric. I think if you have strive in there, that perhaps it doesn't have a measure now, but that does allow for staff to perhaps develop some policies or programs underneath that they can bring back to council. It's, it's.
Oh, it's okay, you want to go first?
I was just gonna say, it's, it's strive to me means like there's, there's intention with, as you look and plan for these events, you're putting some intention into how you, you know, who you're adding.
I would be open to splitting it into two, honestly, because if you want to put strive to allow all cultures, I'm fine with that. I just don't think there's a lot of teeth, I think that's just how we should operate. And we're always trying to be inclusive of everybody, no matter who they are. But I do like the fact that the city has traditionally tried to do some cultural events. I like the multicultural because you're not backing one over the other, you're saying we want to celebrate everybody's culture. But I do like those cultural events, Latino Fest was, was a fun event. I enjoyed it every time we put it on. So to me, it's almost two different things because of the way these metrics are. So if everybody else would be open, I almost feel like they should be two different.
I think that will give us a broader perspective and I think our, our community would benefit from that, too. And then that would keep us from excluding, you know, any of the specialty events, too.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Okay, excellent. I want to revise that one.
So we have an and or.
Hi.
That's, that's clear.
Good, got it.
We've got it.
Next one? All right. Develop a more proactive two-way communication and cross-departmental approaches to work with neighborhoods throughout the city, including those with and without formal homeowners associations. Measures to develop collaborative outreach programs with twenty-five percent of Westminster's one hundred and sixty HOAs and apartment communities by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
I, I like this, I just would like to know how we also reach out to the ones without, just because I'm from the neighborhood that is, you know, traditionally one of the biggest neighborhoods that also has biggest section of it, doesn't have an HOA. I mean, we have community groups that are open to meeting with the city, so I just don't want them to be excluded because they don't have an HOA.
I totally agree.
Yeah, the cities are not represented by HOA.
I mean, yours, Chair didn't agree, you don't have one either, right?
Yeah, there's a ton of communities that have them.
Story, this one story doesn't have them.
Okay, we will work up a second measure there for the non-HOA. Once we put, we'll consult with our staff who work in our communities.
This is only with HOAs and apartments.
Yeah.
But you could do the same thing and just make sure you advertise that they were going to have a meeting at the grand, that's, you know, for your community or countryside rep group. Just don't want them to be left out.
Let's put that and do another one that's specific to neighborhoods that don't have a formal organization.
Well, they do, yeah, I guess they, they do in a way, you know, like they're community groups, so I don't know, it's like helping it formalize them, too.
Facebook page count?
Kind of, I don't know.
Well, it's a form of outreach.
And they hold events, right?
It's a form of outreach and it's identif, readily identifiable group.
When we had this before, ours, we met at Chair.
All right, moving on to the next one, to develop a structured program and awareness campaign to encourage residents to shop at locally owned small businesses in the community. Got a couple of different metrics for this one. The first, about a hundred percent of participating businesses in a shop local program. Second, seventy-five percent of local small businesses satisfied with or very satisfied with the program. And the third is that there's a ten percent increase year over year in participating businesses. I feel like, yes, thank you, that percentage should not be there, it should be a hundred.
So wouldn't, wouldn't we want this program managed by the Chamber of Commerce? Are we recreating the wheel here? I mean, they do a lot of this.
I think, yeah, I think that's already in our agreement, in our memorandum of understanding that we.
But we don't manage them, so it needs to be under one of our departments.
And I mean, that this, like in this metric, if they participated in the shop local chamber thing, that would be the metric we'd want, right? So if eighty percent of them participate in the chamber thing out of our businesses, that would mean the metric's met. So we're just encouraging them to participate, is that accurate?
Yes.
So even our support of the chamber is really part of this.
Yeah, because if you, if it scrolled over to your broad, your council objective, it's fostering a well-informed citizenry and part of that is outreach education and opportunities. So part of it is just making sure that there's the awareness out there and working with the chamber to make sure your small businesses are aware of this program and these opportunities.
The chamber itself.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And the objective, the focus objective, it says develop a structural program. Can we say something like co-develop with chamber or something to be specific?
Or leverage the chamber or work with the chamber.
Yeah, rather than, it sounds like we're recreating from scratch when it exists.
Something chamber.
Something chamber.
Something chamber.
Well, or could we add a, a, a performance measure related to the chamber? Perhaps, rather than alter the, alter the objective, perhaps we could offer up a KPI where we measure our, our co-success with the chamber, perhaps?
Yeah.
The chamber has a, has a subset of our population represented, but not all of it. So these are, these are KPIs for the whole city.
Yeah.
So maybe we could introduce a KPI as to how we're doing with the chamber, if that would be.
How would that be measured, I'm just curious?
I mean, we, we, we know, we can, we know what, what the chamber membership is. So maybe with working with economic development, we could come up with something there. Is that?
That's good for me.
Next focus objective, continue to implement the ADA transition plan. This one we have tied to community survey question, accessibility of streets, sidewalks, and buildings for people with disabilities. And this would be a new one, that's in the 2022 survey. So you're hoping to get an average rating of seventy-five or above. And if that survey comes in and it's less than, then clearly your first performance measure would be to increase that to seventy-five. Next one. Continue to draw from community diversity and planning and preparing for programs throughout the city. This one is also tied to that community survey. The city provides an opportunity for all voices to be heard and draws upon community diversity and decision-making. And this would be to increase to top twelve in the front range, which these are a little bit, these metrics are a little bit not true, it's usually twenty percent increase, you already have an average rating of seventy-five, so you could also say that you would like that rating to increase to eighty or eighty-five. Oh, no. That's not helpful.
That's a delia, I'll vote half a second.
Not now, not now!
You're, you saw it.
Crisis averted, crisis averted.
That is, we all, we all agreed.
All right, so how do we feel about the metric for this one?
Got a question on, do we need a, another focus objective in this objective? For sort of economic development objective related to restaurant, diversity of our restaurant? I know it's sort of market-driven, but we could also be seeking more cultural diversity across our restaurants.
I, you certainly could add a focus objective, but I feel like there is quite a list of focus objectives now. And I think that rather than continuing to add objectives and then energy and attention gets split all over the place. It's something that, just like that affordable housing, I would recommend that you start with this pretty solid set. And then as things get achieved or accomplished and you make some progress, as you do your annual review of this plan, you have the ability to add in some more focused objectives. I think there are thirty-six, maybe thirty-seven focused objectives at this point, which is a lot. But I'm just concerned that council, the community, staff are going to start losing sight.
But that assumes that we have the right, all the right focus objectives in here already, so why add more, right? I don't know if we do. I don't see a total number as being an entrance, I think we should just do what we think the city needs. And if there's a lot, probably the city needs a lot of things. And I think that's, we can all agree that there's a lot of change, neither.
Certainly, but part of a strategic plan is being very intentional about figuring out and prioritizing what you need to address first. And I think as a group, you've kind of decided that these are the set of objectives you'd like to start with. And like staff to prioritize with the community and businesses. And then as those things get accomplished or progress gets made.
But I'm speaking to a focused objective, not a strategic objective. I think we should add another focus one.
I'm going to disagree on, on this, this pretense, and this is the same with the climate change thing. That's how we should go about our business. I feel like the, the opportunities, we're always trying to find the things that are more energy efficient or whatever, when it comes to the climate, we're trying to find what things that are more diverse all the time as far as like being inclusive, but you don't want to pass by opportunities of businesses that are being market driven. But you don't want to pass by opportunities of businesses that are being market driven just because we're, we're busy looking for a particular kind of business. I'll give you an example, for many years, the council had an, uh, objective of more chef-owned restaurants. And that was the objective. It wasn't more restaurants, it was more chef-owned restaurants. I don't know how many chef-owned restaurants we ended up having, but it certainly was an objective for a long time. And so I feel like just saying, hey, we want, you know, economic development knows we want more diverse offerings. If the opportunity arises, they're going to jump on them if it arises. But the focus is, you know, more, more restaurants if, you know, they come forward. We want a vibrant economy. So if the opportunities come forward, we want to make sure that we're fostering whatever opportunity makes Westminster more of a vibrant community with more diverse jobs and, you know, pumping the economy. Just my two cents.
Anyone else?
Four?
All right, priority four. We have consolidated a couple of these focused objectives because really in talking with staff, particularly PRL, a lot of these things were all, if you're going to be doing one of them, you're naturally going to be doing these others. So we consolidated the focused objectives so that it gives you easier performance outcome measures. The first one, to develop and communicate to the community a plan for the acquisition of an additional open space and trails. And have the plan completed by December of 2023. And that was one that we talked about a little bit the last work session. We didn't necessarily want to give away all of the strategy behind what the city may be thinking of that. Just to have the plan. Next one, next is to update in partnership with the community, the PRL Comp Master Plan, address libraries, parks, golf, open space, trails, urban tree canopy, recreation programs and recreation facilities. And then we specifically called out all of the different plan components that used to be individual objectives. But you still have them all stated in there. It's just encompassed in one objective. And then the performance measures on the right. All residents live within a quarter mile of a park, open space or trail access point by December 24. To develop management and acquisition plans that evaluate the current and future needs and opportunities of the city's public lands, programs and urban tree canopy by December of 24. Pause there, see if there are questions on those two.
Um, unless we imagine we are already meeting a quarter mile of a park, open space or trail access point by December 24. I mean, was that like one more acquisition, then we're there? I mean, that's, it's, I don't know if it's like the best measure to be planning a city by. I don't mind identifying a, a goal where we want to have residents within a quarter mile of some type of specific amenity space or an acre per thousand, or acres per thousand residence, um, measure. This is just like, oh, by, you know, access to a trail point, I would say that's not the same thing to me as a park. And so I just, I'm not seeing where, we're not really defining, you know, like in equal access to park amenities and recreational amenities for the city through this measure. Park is different than an open space, it's different than a trailhead.
Agreed. I think this really speaks to having residents have the ability to access just some type of open space, trail or something. It speaks that it's not all urban area. And that's a measure that we see in a lot of communities, that they either try and measure it by a quarter mile or by a third of a mile.
It's typically to a park or some type of defined amenity. There's just that, I, like, a park is so different than a trail point.
And it would be good to know where we're starting, you know, what's the baseline? So how many of our people aren't within this measure?
We, we can take this one away and work on it a bit. There's one possibility of splitting this performance measure into two and maybe having this as a, as the broader one, so there is some access to something within, within a radius and then, um, and a different one for park and open space, perhaps? I don't, Tomas is here, maybe you could help me.
Uh, there was a lot of, you'll remember in the last few years, there's been a lot of conversation about providing access of a quarter mile to parks. You're absolutely right. And as I was thinking about it, the number one use of parks is, uh, passive use of parks through walking and jogging and just being in nature. And so I take full responsibility for this quarter mile access to trails, trails and open space. Because in my mind, it was creating that 10-minute walk to an opportunity to be in nature, whether it's a park or it's, uh, just an open space. So that's where that came from. And a lot of communities, you're right, many communities are using this as a measure of accessibility to opens, to nature. And that's, when you do any, if you ask anybody, what's their number one goal for themselves for a park? They want access to nature. They're all going to put that as number one. And then walking and jogging and just being, having a place to be out in nature will be number two. Organized sports and all of that, while it's great to offer it and we want to keep offering it, it's always much, much, much lower on the list of what people are looking for. So if we want to create a measure, and I also think that we are, we don't, uh, I don't think it's reasonable, I agree with you councillor, to say we can achieve this by December of 2024, but I think we should have a plan that identifies it. And to councillor Baker's point is that we need to do the analysis to understand, what do we have right now? What's our baseline? And then how do we get, how do we achieve this access for everybody? Equal access to nature, uh, which I believe is one of your main goals.
Okay, so I, I get that. Um, and I like the idea that it's not, the idea that we're going to meet that goal by 24.
No, I think I misquote that.
Okay, because I mean, I've been doing this for over 20 years too, in terms of like comprehensive plan and how you're, you're planning your communities out. And, um, can we also make sure that, I mean, a quarter mile is supposed to be a five-minute walk? Are we identifying, we should be using walk sheds versus just quarter mile radiuses? Just kind of amp it up a bit?
Yeah, the walk shed's much more accurate. Um, I usually strive for a 10-minute, 10-minute walk. I thought, for me, and maybe it's the way I walk, and I can do a quarter mile in 10 minutes. That's what normal people are, working at sort of a normal amble would take to get there.
Yeah.
But we can definitely, I, I agree with you that it needs a little bit of refinement.
Okay, thank you. Who else? Next one?
All right. Develop management and acquisition plans that evaluate the current and future needs and opportunities in the city's public lands, programs and urban tree canopy by December 2024. Speak to Tomas's point, he's wanting to make sure that those plans are developed and you can establish those baselines for measuring moving forward. Relatedly, to complete a, complete a city trail plan that includes inventory and maps existing city trail network, addressing gaps in access and establishes criteria for trail management consistent with the purpose the trail serves, including but not limited to surface type, maintenance routines and allowed use evaluation by June 30 of 2024.
I have two questions on this one. We don't have one today, a city trail plan, curious?
We have a map, yeah.
So when we say complete a city trail plan, are we talking about updating what we currently have? Not fitting any, okay. And the second question, how closely would this work together with the fire mitigation plan? I assume when we talk about maintenance and so forth, that fire mitigation plan and this needs to work pretty closely together, right?
Yes, councillor, that's exactly right. Because a lot of the trails for, are an important part of the fire, um, stops that are included. So, and as well as some of the mowing that we do is intended to help mitigate the fire, risk of fire. It would be very much hand in hand.
And it doesn't have to be in this, but just, I know in the back of your head, and I've mentioned it before, because I've heard of that ad hoc especially, um, where the council and managers go and talk about, they, they have a master plan that they're looking at for the entire region for those trails. And so where our trails then go into Bloomfield, North Glenn, Denver, Federal Heights, um, talking with those partners, how things are going to connect if they aren't already connected. So that people can keep on going. And there's already a group working on that. Just so we're a part of it. Next one?
All right, so the next one, enhance the city's use on existing public lands through collaboration with the community and neighboring jurisdictions to create placemaking and positive activation that provides a sense of safety and belonging to all residents. This measurement would be a 5% increase in resident satisfaction with community spaces specifically.
Does that time out to 22?
I think it should be.
Uh, actually, it would have to, it would have to be then tied to our next biannual survey. So that would be 24.
24.
We'll get, we'll get, we'll get a little, we'll get a baseline, well, we'll get a baseline this year on this biannual survey and that next, yeah, so it had 24, yeah.
Can you put that in there?
Which will also tie directly, I think, into our homeless effort.
Next one?
Right. The performing periodic review of fee and fine structures. This is one outstanding that staff and I are working to develop a good performance metric around, whether it is they're evaluating and reviewing a particular amount of finer fees a year or how they're going to really measure that, if it's a compliance or infrastructure, something like that. Next, allocate funding within the general fund budget for the payment of residential dog license fees. And this is a straightforward implemented by a particular date. Has it been done, yes or no? Next, continue utility bill assistance programs to help residents who may struggle to pay their bills. And this performance metric is simply to maintain current utility bill assistance programs. There was some conversation at the last work session around this utility bill assistance program. So maintaining... Lots of questions there.
Why wouldn't we want to expand it? What was the reason?
I'd like to decrease it by making water affordable enough that people don't have it.
I think it'd be a reasonable budget discussion. One way or the other.
Maybe we add into this performance metric, but it's something that gets discussed during budget development.
Can we see some sort of, uh, obviously you're going to connect with this, but I'd like to see, um, usage, say over the last five-year period, what it's done as far as percent of people using it, has it increased, decreased?
Well, hit more over summer, right?
Yeah, I'd like to see what, you know, what kind of metrics. I don't know that we have, I don't remember seeing what, you know, what it's done year over year. You can ask for that.
It's happened somewhere.
I think that was one of them that you had sent me. That was one of my questions a few months ago. Yeah, we should be able to pull that up.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I never seen a graph, right?
All right, and next, continue to partner with the school districts, parks, parks and libraries to find natural synergy and compatible goals. Just to demonstrate collaborative efforts with the North Metro Arts Alliance, Westminster Historical Society, DUSA Collective and other arts and culture organizations for 10 events annually.
How many events are we committing ourselves to or are these overlapping?
Some, I, some of them likely overlap, yes.
Well, some of the, like the activity guide that just came out, you know, the highlighting, the ones that our partners do, you know? So, um, it was big highlights, Historic Westminster included in there. The Historical Society events are now included in the, so the city doesn't have to do, you know, it's highlighting them and, and staff time as far as promoting them, but.
Oh, we're not running them all.
Right. Yeah, but that's where that collaborative part really jumps in. Yeah, good collaboration.
Next, is to elevate the profile of Westminster's arts, culture and history. Measure 2019 Arts and Culture Master Plan, updated to align the city's 2022 strategic plan by November 30th of this year.
Not increasing offerings or activities or measuring events slash activities, just, we don't, you know, we have some, but are we, is that a baseline? And then are we trying to, if we're trying to elevate the profile, are we trying to add to it or just get those to have more attendance?
We'll add in here to establish a baseline and we can, when we're doing implementation planning for these objectives and performance measures, we can really specify and get granular on that one.
Yeah, like how many residents participate in, um, I mean, maybe over time, that's something we could collect through our survey. Like, do you participate in arts events?
I know North Metro Arts, Historical Society, anybody that goes for SCFD money has huge numbers. Very good numbers, because that's the only way you get your money.
That's a good one.
That's the way you're, are tier one, tier two or three, tier three.
We do all the work on that.
All right, I think it probably has that.
And next is to integrate and expand access to arts and culture throughout the city. Measures to provide at least 30 mobile art or cultural programs annually, touching all regions of the city. Next, attract and support artists, art groups, makers and creative industries. Measure to include input from at least 20 local and regional artists, art groups, makers and creative industries in the 2022 update to that Arts and Culture Master Plan.
We add tattoo artists in there.
It's only conceptual.
Is this?
It could be a non-home.
Right. What we're talking about, like, this is a cultural group we're trying to fit, a steering committee advisory for this plan process. I mean, include input could be like, well, babe. We can define that a little bit more.
I will say, any, any master plan that's developed comes before council for approval and is a public record for people to come. So that's also an area where they can get as far as.
Yeah, but if we wanted to help shape what's happening, some clarity on, you know, how involved we want people, we're just collecting, you know, discreet input.
All right, ensure the sustainability of arts and culture in Westminster. Measure for this is a percent for art program is drafted and proposed by October of 2023.
What's that?
They have to draft.
No, what percent for art program?
I think with a percentage of total development, the past, like Denver.
Total development, like Denver has 1%. Oh, I meant.
And I don't mean to be rude, but when did we talk about this?
This is, yeah, this was staff added objective, so.
Council never talked about a percent for our program, but staff thought this would be a good defining way to meet the goal to ensure sustainability of the arts.
There there is a small amount collected during the development process. It's very, very small.
Yeah.
And it's, I think it's a it's a fixed dollar amount.
Or $2,000 per acre.
So would the the, um, plan be to increase that or just figure out how to actually utilize what we're already taking?
Increase. It's $2,000 per acre. It's very small.
Hear me out. We're not, if we're not utilizing it now and you can't show me value that we've done over the past, I'm going to be hard pressed to say this is a good spend of taxpayer money. I'm all for increasing the arts, but I'm not for government taking more money than they haven't efficiently spent on what they were supposed to spend it on.
Or is there, I mean, just making a basis for how it could be spent, right? If it's in an arts and culture master plan and there's a clear path for how it could be spent, because it is so small right now, it's usually just, um, spent on a sculpture that stays on the site. And so there could be broader opportunities for us to, you know, utilize those funds in a way where it's more meaningful, but right now it's a small amount that may not lead to.
And is it paid by the development community? Okay, thank you.
That's how you have the dolphins on the corner of 92nd and Sheridan.
I like it better when there was water in there and people put.
Because Sullivan's mother liked dolphins. That's the reason those are there. Then you have the gold forest down Walmart.
So isn't this program then going to end when we build out the city and we're all but there?
It's getting small.
Well, that's for your adaptive use and redevelopment.
But then you would, you didn't, then you don't get much, right? Because they're just, it's everything's just redeveloping in a smaller scale. You don't have, you know, because it's, and it's only on commercial development as well. So it's a very, it's pretty limited what we get it, what we get it from.
Next one, promote the authentic history and cultural assets of Westminster as an economic driver through support of the Arts District, Historic Westminster, by leveraging partnerships with organizations like Historic Landmark Board. Measure to formalize a 501(c)(3) and increase funding capacity of that established by October of 2023.
And who's forming the 501(c)(3)?
And who's going to run it and spend the money?
Because this Historic Society is already a 501(c)(3).
Yes, it's in North Metro Art.
Are you guys, uh, 501(c)(3) already? Yeah, so I want to know who's the next party that's trying to be a 501(c)(3). I don't know how many we're going to have or need or what.
So this is an arts district in Historic Westminster, so, oh, okay, so we have north.
All right.
Yeah, it's, um, that's missing in action. We will, we will clean that up. There's no verb there. It's like form or encourage or support.
Yeah. Enhance current.
Right.
And I want to know who's forming it and why.
Yeah.
Because you have too many down there, you eat each other.
It says it wants to be, well, an economic driver, so what's it going to do to do that?
Exactly. The Historical Society and North Metro would like to know who's competition's coming from and why.
All right, onto the last priority. Ensure that the comprehensive plan and affordable and workforce housing strategic plan are reflective of and responsive to the future needs of our community. Measure comprehensive plan and affordable and workforce housing strategic plan updates completed by the end of September 30th of this year.
So that assumes that we have an affordable and workforce housing strategic plan.
We do.
We do?
Yeah.
It was done in 2017, I believe.
Have we updated, as part of the new comp plan process, did we update the, um, our housing needs assessment?
No.
So how would we update our strategy if we don't have updated numbers?
That would be part of our work plan is we would have to regather some data.
Next is to identify and carry out water treatment plant studies and improvements that integrate for an improvement needs. Upcoming regulatory requirements in the city's long-term goals. This one, we've got percent of projects completed, percent of selection study completed, and I believe. Brett?
I want to go back to this last one, just because this is, um, that focus objective needs to be driven by availability of water. None of that happens unless you have water to do it. I know I've heard multiple people on this council say so, so it absolutely needs to be part of that focused objective.
Do you want to say like, and responsive to the future needs and resources of our community?
Words meant that however you want, as long as it, it equals, there ain't water,
Does anyone have questions on water treatment plant studies? Work to improve the pavement quality impact of roads throughout the city. Improve the PQI to 63 by 2027, currently at 53.
Did you guys drive that number?
Staff drove it.
Is there any reasoning behind that?
Yeah, isn't that a restored, isn't that restoring it to a certain level?
I was trying to find.
We can, we can and opt to clarify where that 63 came from, I think. It is, I think it is set to a historic level.
Yeah, because we did have some specific dollar discussion too, so.
All right. Pursue opportunities to increase funding for streets maintenance, including alternative revenue streams and the city's infrastructure roadway improvement fee. Measure is grant and or alternative funding obtained as a total percentage of the cost of street maintenance.
I have to reread that.
What's an example of alternative funding?
If I may, um, some is, uh, commercial mileage use, completions. So.
My, my only thing on this is that if we're saying we want in the one above it, that we want to get up to 63 PQI. Um, I'm all for us finding alternatives, but this is the same kind of thing. I don't want us just not getting to that 63 because we're busy chasing alternative dollars opposed to prioritizing our current funding. So, um, it doesn't mean that if you get the funding that, you know, I'm not open to us swapping it in and reprioritizing.
Or adding to it.
Yeah. We're getting to 73% then, whatever, if it's not percent, 73 PQI, but.
I think this may be a case of us, um, adding a second KPI in here to deal with the total level of funding. And then a second one, which is closer to this one, which, which I think also needs a little bit more work, which is to talk about how much grant funding we can get and apply. So let us work with those two. This has been very helpful. So we'll add a second KPI for overall funding level and then, um, separate out this one and be more specific about what we mean by grant and alternative funding.
Okay. Develop recommendations and an associated action plan for addressing deferred maintenance throughout the city. The measure is to develop an action plan to address deferred maintenance by March of 2023 to allow for budgetary planning for the 24 budget cycle.
Isn't this just, uh, a how of the first one? So getting to a PQI of 63, aren't these just ways of doing that?
This one is certainly one of the ways of doing that. But when we talked, uh, with staff and worked through this, when one of the things that they felt they really needed to do, and it's enough work that I think it warrants being a measure, is get their arms around all of that deferred maintenance. And are we talking about citywide? What are we talking about in terms of infrastructure for water, for roads, for public works, equipment, and really formalizing a plan around all of that? That was a question that came up with staff, like, when we say deferred maintenance, are we talking about citywide? Are we talking about just public works? That's going to take some time and work to really quantify what that is and then develop a good plan for how you start addressing it.
Yeah, I suggested this case that we need to add after deferred maintenance, uh, a bit of a description of what we're talking about there because it's broader than streets, um, applies to other infrastructure as well. So, um, I think that's where the confusion is. This looks like a streets point, but it's actually.
No, it's not just.
It's not just streets. I apologize for that. We'll clarify, unless council disagrees, but I think that 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 captures what council discussed when they, when you talked about this one, it was all city infrastructure.
Yeah, because that fills in after the the comma on the broad one, comma, maintenance
Complete and implement the Federal Boulevard and 72nd Avenue quarter studies. Percent of studies completed and percent implemented. That's when they didn't take those measures further because really there are some external factors that are beyond Westminster's control. They wanted to recognize those. And once they get those studies completed and implemented, they can figure out how to describe funding and those partnerships. Increase pedestrian connectivity and safety throughout the city. Increase connectivity of trails, sidewalk, and walkways in linear feet completed by 15% in 2023.
But again, without a baseline that's meaningless.
That seems like a lot, no?
Uh, yeah, it does.
That was my only, when I read that earlier.
Also, that's a word safety in there. Are we saying that more connected trails would increase safety? Or are we missing a measure for safety?
We're missing sidewalks.
Well, yeah, the sidewalks is, because I think that was really a big part of our, we've got where we don't have safe sidewalk, safe passage and.
May not have some street.
Yeah. Um, increase pedestrian connecting and safety throughout the city. Increase connectivity trails, sidewalks, and walkways. Yeah.
That depends between a walkway.
It's kind of broad. We'll see how it flushes out.
All right, the last one. Continue and expand water conservation programs and projects. Measurement is a percent decrease in water usage per capita.
You know, this is what I'm saying was the city's plan with its conservation plan was to take water from existing users and give to new users. This pers, this percent decrease in water usage per capita, who are we going to give that water to? Who are we saving the water for?
I I don't have a problem with an overall strategy of educating people on how they can best use their water, because there may be times when that would come in handy.
Right?
And I think we addressed that in the first part, too, is so that we can water conservation methods to prevent, um, exploitation, destruction, and neglect.
Right.
So then we can maybe key this in.
No, no one wants to waste water.
Right. Water usage.
We want to use it as it's appropriate. And the biggest user of water in the city is the city with our parks. What do we use a sixth of all the water in the city?
Two thoughts.
I'm not sure what the number is, but it's, it is a very high percentage.
Besides education to residents on making, it would be more meaningful for us as a city to be the leader in that and say, we're going to, as a city, decrease X percent, being the ones who go first. But the other half of that, that's always been a concern of mine, is as soon as you do that, that's realistically revenue out of the utility fund. And so it's always a double-edged sword because we're trying to fund things and if you decrease use, then that's correct.
It's not fine line.
So I I think we need to be very mindful of that balancing act because then you arbitrarily make yourself maybe potentially have to jack up rates more than you would otherwise.
So may I, so are we looking to, uh, would we potentially be looking to have a KPI here, which is talking about the city use of water? Reducing the city use.
Water would be excellent.
I think it would be, I think it would be a meaningful thing to say we go, we're going to go first and say, here's how you can do it. We're going to, we're going to put our money where our mouth is and say that we didn't. But I would want to know what that means, like if you.
It means like our local park didn't get watered, say it was three times a week, it got watered twice a week last year. So they told us it's going to not look brilliant green. It's going to look a little different with a little brown in it.
Well, and also, well, the city's done programs, like we've changed some really park space into open space and reduced the, careful that. But the other part of it is, who are we saving it for?
Our future.
Well, we can only bank.
Live in a semi, or does it?
Yeah, but we only can bank so much per year, but I'm saying we will have years where we have less.
And under Colorado law. Under Colorado law, we have to use all the water we own beneficially. We cannot save water. If we don't use all the water we own beneficially, we lose it. We will lose the water rights. We're obligated to use it. And that's everyone's.
I think we've actually, um, heard from our water council that storage is beneficial use for municipality. Confirm that, but I don't know that, um, exhausting storage is required. I think storage satisfies.
Storage using, okay, absolutely. But we have finite storage, too.
That's true, why we, you know, adding water.
Yeah, so that's why the Wattenberg.
And I would just say, under the conservation programs, because you've heard me say before, we have the what, the plant thing. It's, they have one to three plants that are native to the area. Let's go with the local people that have, um, and talk with them and plan ahead and have them bring in the things that grow here so that we can advertise and support our local businesses. And they can have 100% of their plants that are semi-erried, um, that will grow here.
Do we have a metric, Jody, around, um, the areas that we have changed to natural grass? One like that sticks out in my mind is, um, part of, I don't know if they still call it Toteful Park, but that's what I always called it off of, off of the countryside.
Next to Kipper.
They did Le Goffle for the first couple of years, they changed that part, but now you can't really tell there's. Didn't look awful for the first couple of years, they changed that part, but now you can't really tell the difference. Um, but I'm curious, like what, what was the actual impact to how much water we didn't, didn't use? You know, those are the kind of metrics that I think are meaningful, like, you know, how did we decrease it? Did we do it by switching to natural grass? Did we switch it by. Changing our watering habits, changing uh irrigation systems?
Even tell people what's the other kind of grasses they conceive instead of Kentucky bluegrass.
And, and I believe council has funded um upgrades to irrigate, irrigation systems, which might have um more efficient. Use of the water in the parks and golf courses as a result.
Well, there's eighteen new trees in my park, so it's gonna take more water.
It's good for the canopy.
Takes water, it's, they don't, they don't grow. Like breath. Okay, so what do you want us to do with twelve through fourteen?
Twelve through fourteen, you do not have to look at. Staff will go through and tie to. Your guiding principles during their implementation work for the strategic plan. The only question I have for you now is with those objectives that we just went through. Are you happy with them as they are to finalize those?
Staff heard the concerns we had, so as, because I know they're gonna work on these, they aren't so happy with absolutely everything, they're gonna freak, so. They heard us, I trust.
And we will take that feedback and finalize performance metrics. When we do that implementation plan, which really is how staff will then after council has adopted the plan, how staff plans to roll it out. To finalize those performance measures and objectives are good to go now.
So what we can do, and maybe we'll just check this on process, stay with the current timing, bring the objectives back for council, city council to approve in public meeting. And perhaps that night or very shortly thereafter, bring back in a uh near final version of the key performance indicators. So we can continue this um, the sequential approach to keep making progress. And we'll, and we'll save the, the K P I finalizing for the, the next step, if that makes sense. Give you another chance, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, give you another chance to look at this wording, um, but it can be the key performance indicators. Based on tonight's discussion, we've got a lot of great input from you all, so thank you very much for that. A lot of very, very good direction.
Can I get the clarification?
Yes.
Uh, so I believe the plan would be, council's subway will bring back the strategic plan, the goals, the um strategic objectives and the focus objectives. On hopefully for next week's packet, so for council's adoption, and then give us a couple more weeks to, to clean up the K P I's and. It may be later in May that we bring that back to you. Thank you for that time, that will be sweet for that.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. So in that, in that approach, we'll strip away the draft K P I's from what you would see. Knowing that we're working on it and bringing them back in based on this discussion tonight, if that's okay.
Good.
Thank you, staff, for all the work.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's uh ten fifty nine and we're out of here.
Good.